If I could have your attention, please.
Nice sound.
What?
Nice sound.
Oh, good. Our sound guide, Brian Steele, wired in. Fortunately, I talked him into waiting until after I used the facilities. It's 10 o'clock, and I will be calling this meeting officially to order in a moment. We will be starting the meeting with a pledge of allegiance, but not yet. This meeting is a public meeting, and we have as our collaborators today a gentleman from Northwest Public Access TV. We were the lucky ones in the draw, and they decided to come and film us, possibly because we're so quaint. The meeting is governed by state law and by Robert's Rules of Order, of which I'm supposed to be the expert. But this is the Reader's Digest version. The real version is about three times this thick. So I may make a mistake, and if you catch me in a mistake, you can make a point of order. Or if I make a ruling that you think is wrong, then you can, if you can convince two-thirds of the gathering to agree with you, then you can challenge or overturn a ruling by the speaker. Not everybody tells their people that. I, however, am not a power monger. So unless we amend the rules to otherwise allow Robert's Rules, it says that non-voters may speak only if you all, the voters, agree to it. And that even means we suspend the rules through a two-thirds vote or by unanimous consent. If nobody objects, then I will say something like, "Is there any opposition?" If, I know, and has been, if there isn't, I'll say, "Seeing none, we will allow whoever it is to speak." If you would stand and let us signify.
Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So one other reminder is that, you know, we all live, even though we're really spread out, we pretty much live cheek by jowl as neighbors. And you can disagree, but we try to keep it very civil, and we always have pretty much here. There may have been some exceptions at some meeting I wasn't at, but there's a big gap between saying, "I'm right," and "I believe I'm right," because that leaves a little space for movement. And here ends the sermon. And we will now commence with the annual town meeting of Bakersfield, Vermont, covering the doings of the town for 2018 and the projections into the future for 2019, for 2020. Is that right? Yes, okay. Kathy says yes. Kathy's always right.
Do it.
Yes.
That's my other area. Traditionally, we've had a moment of silence in reflection.
Yes, you're right.
May we have that?
Is there any objection to having a moment of silence to contemplate what it is we're about to do and how we live our lives? Seeing none, we'll have a moment of silence. Thanks, Lance.
Thank you for the opportunity.
There's one other housekeeping question, which is, when you speak, when you want to speak, please raise your hand. I will recognize you, state your name, say your piece. If you want to move a question, now raise your hand and be recognized. The whole point is to have this go in an orderly fashion, so you must be recognized by the moderator before you, before your passion takes you away into the issue and you speak. And questions should be directed to me, and then, if necessary, I will redirect them to whoever is most likely to have an answer for your question. You will get up to two opportunities to speak on an issue, but you won't get your second one until everyone who wants to speak at least once has spoken, and then we'll go into the second round. Okay, that does that. Now we're up to Article One. I will be reading the articles as they come, just so we're all over on the same page. Of course, I can't find mine, but there it is. Okay. Article One, "To elect a moderator for the ensuing year." Are there any nominations?
I would like to nominate you in there.
Nominations do not require a second. Okay, great, thank you. Are there any other nominations? Nobody else is interested? I can tell you right now that I'm not going to last 20 years. I'm like many of our moderators have. All right. Unless there is an objection, can we close nominations? Okay, I see no objection. Nominations are closed. I would entertain a motion to have the town clerk cast one ballot in favor of the only candidate for the job. Someone moved? Pat.
I'd second it.
Oh, move!
Move! Somebody second?
I'll second that, Jim.
Jim Lance here.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that the town clerk should cast one ballot for the sole nominee for the position of town moderator for the next year. All those in favor of the motion, have Kathy cast one ballot. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please signify by saying no. The motion is passed, and Kathy will cast one ballot. Sometimes I don't know whether to say thank you graciously or get me out of here. Okay. Article Two is to vote by Australian ballot for the following officers and questions. A, Select Board Member, three-year term. B, Select Board Member, one-year term. Lister, three-year term. Auditor, three-year term. Auditor, two years of a three-year term. There's double Es in here. Planning Commission, three-year term. Planning Commission, two-year term. And lastly, Planning Commission, one year of a two-year term. Because that's happening on Australian ballot, the polls are open from 10 this morning to 7 this evening. And you can get up and vote anytime except when we're doing a paper ballot for some other question. Article Three, "To act on the reports of various town officers as contained in the current financial statement." Now, I'm informed by the training I went to that we actually don't act on these. They are what they are, except for corrections and amendments or questions that you might have. But we actually hear the reports, and then we all know what's going on. So are there any comments or questions on Article Three?
Hi. I have a correction to make to page 23, under the equipment repair. The repairs to equipment in the top section says $50,354.74. It should actually read $5,838.84. The remaining $44,515.89 is what we transferred out of the account to the new equipment fund. So again, under equipment repairs, where it reads $50,354.74, it should actually read That's what we actually had for equipment repair last year.
Would you say that, say that this number is supposed to be again, please?
Yes. It should actually read $5,838.84, which is what was actually spent for equipment repair. And then $44,515.89 was transferred to the new equipment fund, to total that $15,000.
Actually, I was remiss. I need someone to move the question, move the article before we're supposed to be discussing.
I'll move the article to correct the equipment repair fund.
Can you hold that thought? You just move the article, and we'll continue in discussion? Okay. So I need a second for moving the article so we can discuss it. Pat? Pat Evans. Okay. Was there a question somewhere else? On any of the reports? No question. Okay. All right. We can move to accept the corrected article?
So move.
Seconded? Russ? Alan? All right. So it's been moved and seconded that we act on the reports of various town officers as contained in the current financial statement. Seeing that there's no more discussion, all those in favor of accepting these reports, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes are above the noes, so... So they've done a great job in these reports, and if nobody here has found any other corrections. All right, moving on to Article Four, "To elect the remaining town officers as required by law." A, First Constable. Other nominations? Mr. Lawyer?
Yes, lawyer, I'd like to nominate Brian Westham as First Constable.
Okay. Any other nominations?
Brian Westham would like to turn down the evidence, he'd prefer it to be First, than impeached. Thanks, Eddie.
Okay, are there any other nominations?
That's why I didn't sit there.
We need a First Constable.
Do we have any volunteers?
Okay, if we don't nominate somebody, then the select board's going to go out and grab somebody that's scruffed their neck and tell them they're the First Constable. Jim?
We don't have a First Constable now, do we?
No, we do not.
We didn't buy all right with that one?
I can't find the victim.
There's no, there's no power in the position these days. There's really no reward.
Assisting health officer, assisting various activities in town, yes, there is some, but not a lot.
Okay, I'll remind you that you should ask your questions to me, and I'll redirect them. What's the rulebook says?
My heartfelt apology.
Thank you, Jim. Any other questions or nominations? We still have nominations for First Constable? All right, seeing no nominations, we will pass this over. B, Second Constable. Here's your second chance. Any nominations? There's a lot of people not here, you know? Yes, David, thanks.
The Second Constable is the Animal Control Officer.
Uh, no, you wouldn't. Is Jennifer here?
No.
Ah, okay. Sorry. Nominations do not require seconds, but thanks for your affirmation. Okay, we have a single nomination so far for Second Constable, AKA Animal Control Officer. I wasn't sure if that was intended to be an enticement or a warning.
As a, as an aside and a history, that's the only way we could fill the office last year, is to change Second Constable to Animal Control.
Okay. You may want to add that in next year. All right. Seeing no other nominations, with your permission, we'll close nominations for Second Constable. Jennifer Hall has been nominated for Second Constable. If there are no objections, someone would move that we ask Kathy to cast a single ballot in favor of Jennifer Hall. Second?
Kathy Mallory, second.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we ask Kathy to cast a single ballot in favor of Jennifer Hall for Second Constable. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and Jennifer Hall is elected. C, Collector of Dillington Taxes. Are there any nominations? Go ahead.
Your lawyer, I nominate Kathy Westham.
Okay. Is there, oh, nominations do not require seconds. Any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, are there objections to closing nominations? Seeing none, we'll close nominations. Do you want to cast a ballot for yourself?
Can we just vote?
Voice vote.
Sure, we can voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
You're supposed to wait for me to finish. Any opposed? Then Kathy has been reelected as Collector of Dillington Taxes. Thank you. D, Grand Juror. Are there any nominations?
Lance's lawyer, I'd like to nominate Larry Krieger to fill the office once more.
And is Larry Krieger here? No, he's not. Okay. Are there any other nominations? Okay. Seeing no other nominations, we will close nominations. And can I have a motion to have Kathy, she has a lot of voting to do.
Can we just voice vote?
We can voice vote.
We like to hear ourselves.
Oh, well, and it's nice for people to know they've been supported by the town. All those in favor of reelected Larry Krieger as Grand Juror, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, Larry Krieger is elected. E, Town Agent. Nominations? Any nominations? Lance?
Lance's lawyer, I'd like to nominate Dylan Westham. As an aside, there is legislation for possibly making this an appointed position.
Okay. All right. There's, Dylan Westham has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none? Would you prefer a voice vote?
Yes.
Okay. I think, I think the only advice against doing a voice vote when it's people involved is that it inhibits anybody from saying no. And so, but casting a single ballot means it's all kind of unchallenging. But if you would prefer to do a voice vote and are confident of the outcome, then I'm only here to do your will. So do you want to do a voice vote?
Yes.
Okay. We are at E, Town Agent. Dylan, Dylan Westham has been nominated. There are no other nominations. All those in favor of electing Dylan Westham as Town Agent, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Dylan Westham is elected. F, Cemetery Commissioner, five-year term. Any nominations? I'm sorry, could you stand up and speak a little louder? Penny Goss is nominated.
I'd like to withdraw my name. I can't do the work that the guy do over there. I would like to nominate Clem Paquette.
Okay. Penny Goss has withdrawn from nomination, but has suggested someone else.
Clem Paquette.
Clem?
He was hitting there when he was a little boy, so he could press him down.
Okay. Clem Paquette has been nominated. Are there any other nominations?
From the Westham, I nominate Stacy Maynard.
Stacy Maynard is nominated. Are there any further nominations? Okay, here we go, folks, your first walk around the room. Because there is a contested election, sorry?
I will respectfully, I will respectfully deny this in my interest to do the same.
I'm sorry.
How long can you help over there?
All right, Clem has withdrawn his nomination. What, you don't want to walk around the room? Okay, so we're down to one nomination.
I move nominations to be closed.
Okay, is there a second?
No, no, a second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that nominations cease. Could, all those in favor of closing nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No? Last chance, okay? Nominations are closed for the Cemetery Commissioner, five-year term. And tell me again, the who you nominated?
Stacy Maynard.
Thank you, Stacy Maynard. Okay. Stacy Maynard, having been nominated, would you prefer a voice vote?
Yes.
All those in favor of Stacy Maynard as Cemetery Commissioner for a five-year term, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Stacy Maynard has been elected by acclamation. G, Library Trustee, three-year term. Nominations?
Cheryl DeRouw, I'd like to nominate Brenda Westham.
Brenda Westham has been nominated. Any other nominations for a Library Trustee, three-year term? Seeing none, we shall close nominations for a Library Trustee, three-year term. Do you prefer a voice vote?
Yes.
Okay. Well, you guys are really stuck to your chairs today, aren't you? I'm sorry, I'm having a senior moment here. Brenda Westham, thank you. Brenda Westham has been nominated. All those in favor of electing Brenda Westham to a three-year term as a Library Trustee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, Brenda Westham is elected by acclamation. Library H, Library Trustee, three-year term. Any other nominations? Yes?
Brenda Westham, I'd like to nominate Wendy Cobb.
Wendy Cobb, okay. Any other nominations? Joy?
The nomination ceases, and the Secretary of Task will elect Wendy Cobb, the Library Trustee.
Is there a second?
All family, second.
Okay. Okay. Wait, I know the script. I'm trying to remember the name.
Wendy Cobb.
Wendy Cobb, got it. We're on H, item 4H, the Library, Second Library Trustee for a three-year term, and Wendy Cobb has been nominated. All those, oh, all those in favor of having Kathy cast one ballot?
There you go.
Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Kathy will pass, cast one ballot. We're at 4I, Library Trustee, two years of a three-year term. Any nominations? Cheryl?
I'd like to nominate Michael Ward.
Mike, Lord, Lord, okay. Any other nominations? It's only a two-year term. Okay. Seeing none, you will close nominations, and would you prefer a voice vote or have Kathy cast one ballot?
Voice vote.
Voice vote, okay. All those in favor of electing Mike, who's an experienced Library Trustee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
I'm sorry, but if you wanted to refuse, you should have said no. So Mike Mark is elected by acclamation. J, 4J, Trustee of Public Funds, a three-year term. Are there any nominations? Lance?
Lance's lawyer, I'd like to nominate Dylan Westham.
Dylan Westham.
Dylan Westham, I'd say that's a, I'd like to respectfully decline, I don't know how to follow the same account.
I'm trying time to be telling us.
Okay, any other nominations? Since Dylan has respectfully declined with thanks, Trustee of Public Funds, three-year term. Joy?
Joy, I'd like to nominate Tennyson Dowell.
Okay.
And then file for.
Officially noted. Officially noted. Joy Dunne is nominating Tennyson Dome as a trustee of public funds, three-year term. Any other nominations? Seeing none? Nominations are now closed. Voice vote? Yes. I understand that if we do this wrong, we're going to have to come back and do it again. Okay.
This is wrong?
No, this is right.
We're at J, Trustee of Public Funds for a three-year term, and Tennyson Dome has been nominated. All those in favor of electing Tennyson Dome, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Saying no. The ayes have it, and Tennyson Dome is elected as trustee of public funds for a three-year And everybody's going to help feed him when Joy divorces him, right? Okay. K, the Hospital Committee, a two-year term. Are there any nominations for Hospital Committee for a two-year term? Joy?
Nominate Bureau Lawyer.
I'm sorry, say, nominate Bureau Lawyer? Okay. Bureau Lawyer has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Seeing, well, if I may take a moment, could you possibly speak to what the Hospital Committee does?
See? Me?
Well, I don't know. Do you know?
All about me doing this for quite a few years, and I have, yeah, there is nothing that I know of that I'm supposed to do exactly. I think it had to do with a little bit of money that was given to the hospital, and somebody's room might be paid for back a lot of years ago. Now, I think money is all pooled together down there or something, I'm not sure. But I haven't had to do anything because nobody's ever directed me doing that.
The last time I remember, a job came into some disrepute because someone was using town money to buy flowers for townspeople who were in the hospital. That was the last thing I knew about it, so. Sorry?
That sounds like a good idea, actually. It's not actually money that the town has. I think, I think it was.
Right, no, it didn't. That's why it was disreputed, because it wasn't supposed to be money that was supposed to be spent that way. But it's been many, many years since then, about thirty-nine or so. So, thirty-six years. All right. Bureau Lawyer has been nominated, and if there are no other nominations, then we will close nominations. And do we prefer a voice vote?
Yep.
Does anyone object to having a voice vote? Okay. Then, all those in favor of electing Bureau Lawyer to the Hospital Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Bureau, you are elected by acclamation. We're at the last in this long list, Brigham Academy Committee Person, a three-year term. Are there nominations? Cheryl?
Shall the town like to nominate Nikki Cribb.
Nikki Cribb? Has been nominated. Is Nikki here?
She's here. Yes, she's here.
She's busy reading here, the jumper board. Okay. Are there any other nominations besides Nikki Cribb? Seeing none? Nominations shall cease. And Cheryl, do you still want to proceed with voice vote?
Yes.
Okay, then, all those in favor of electing Nikki Cribb to the Brigham Academy Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Nikki. The ayes have it, and you're elected by acclamation. Excuse me, I need a water. Okay, we're on to item number five in the warning. Shall the town vote to have its property taxes due on October 7th, 2019? What do you wish to do with this article?
I'll make that motion, Bureau Lawyer.
Okay. I need a second?
I'll second that, Jim Lindtir.
Okay. The motion's been made and seconded that the town will vote to have its property taxes due on October 7th, 2019. Is there any discussion? No discussion, okay. Then we shall proceed directly to vote. All those in favor of the town having its property taxes due on October 7th, 2019, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing no opposition, then the ayes have it, and the item is passed unanimously. Item number six. Shall the town authorize the Select Board to set a tax rate to cover expenses as voted? What do you wish to do with this article? Yes, sir?
Allen Lawyer, so move.
Okay, Allen Lawyer moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Tennyson Dome seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? Then, we are considering whether the town shall authorize the Select Board to set a tax rate to cover expenses as voted. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the article is passed. Article seven. Shall the town authorize the Select Board to borrow money in anticipation of taxes?
Tennyson Dome, so move.
Do I have a second? Ross Allen had a second. Tennyson Dome moved that the town shall authorize the Select Board to borrow money in anticipation of taxes. Is there any discussion? Questions? Okay. Seeing none, then we shall proceed to vote. It's Article seven. Shall the town authorize the Select Board to borrow money in anticipation of taxes? A yes vote means yes, we will. So, all those in favor of the article, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Say nay or no. The ayes appear to have it, and the article is passed. Article eight. Shall the town appropriate $150,000 for winter work? What do you wish to do with this article? To where?
Allen Lawyer, so move.
Second?
Gary Denton, second.
Sorry, again?
Gary Denton, second.
Gary, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. That the town shall appropriate $150,000 for winter work. Are there any questions, or is there any discussion?
Allen Holbert, could you describe when to work?
Say, I'm sorry, say again?
Could you describe when to work, Allen Holbert?
I personally know, or perhaps someone on the side would like to take that on.
When you were consistent, find those snow, de-icing, salt, sanding. A lot of it is going to go to cover the increased cost of salt. There have been a lot of complaints that the roads aren't being plowed enough. The budget is being used. If you want to clear this cloud more, we'll have to increase the budget to cover the increased time, hours, and the cost. Does that answer your question? So, on.
Okay, are there any other questions or discussion regarding winter work budget? Seeing none, and without objection, we'll close discussion, we'll move to vote. We're voting on item number eight. Shall the town appropriate $150,000 for winter work? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes are again above the nose, and we have passed the article. Article nine. Shall the town appropriate $120,000 for winter work?
Dirt work.
Oh, I'm sorry, dirt work. Thank you. Nine. Shall the town appropriate $120,000 for dirt work? What do you wish to do with this article?
Allen Lawyer, so move.
Allen Lawyer moves. Is there a second?
There is one second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion about $120,000 for dirt work?
Allen Holbert again?
Yep.
Could we describe dirt work?
Mr. Lawyer?
Dirt work consists of summer maintenance for roads, grading, addition of gravel, ditch work, culverts. Mowing for ass, yeah, roadside mowing. We tried to keep some control of it, but this item was not increased. It'll remain to be seen whether it's going to be enough money or not. We're trying to keep it down as much as we can. It's increasingly difficult to keep it down. Anything else?
Another. As far as, now, this is, using that gravel, from the gravel pit for resurfacing roads, I'm thinking that possibly we could use crushed stone.
That is possible. It is more expensive.
Well, it is more expensive, but what they're doing with that gravel, from the gravel pit, it's, that's, in my opinion, now, it's still okay for sanding the roads in the winter, but hard, any kind of road base, that is not good at all. If you get rained on, it turns right into slop, automatically in the block. So, we've got to start thinking about improving the road base, or at least keeping what we have. But if you keep on adding that stuff from the gravel pit, that is, that is a lost cause. That stuff is not good for any kind of road base.
That can be, you know, a discussion for this coming year. One other item that I will mention, the Clean Water Act is going to greatly affect the amount of money we have to put into the roads. So, this summer dirt work item will have to go off in the future to comply with state statutes and standards.
You're talking about, well, not now, it's.
Yes, yes, which is part of dirt.
Does that satisfy you, sir? In terms of information?
Thank you, thank you very much.
Are there any other questions or comments? Yes, ma'am?
Joyce Lobinda, I'm wondering if, I appreciate the mowing, but I'm wondering if we could put the mowing off so that we're not taking away wildflowers that these might be having access to? It seems like every year, the flowers are starting to bloom, and then they get mowed down. And I think that that's a good thing to keep the mowing for.
One of the, I think the.
Excuse me?
Oh, sorry.
Any other comments?
Josh, I think one of the main reasons for the mowing is safety. Being able to see around corners, intersections. I know flowers are beautiful, and we'd love to keep them, but safety's got to come first for the people that are using the roads.
Yes.
I find that there are invasive weeds coming up from the south that are not mowed in time, and therefore are reseeding, reseeding without giving face when things are going out into the fields. If they could mow those earlier, it would give time and good flowers to come up after.
Thank you. Yes?
Stacy Maynard, I agree, we don't keep the brush down. I mean, I know right now there are places on the Rhode Island lawn that it's dangerous. It's not safe because the brush doesn't really cut.
Yeah, I agree.
Any other comments?
Allen Holbert again.
I can recognize you, Mr. Holbert. There was someone ahead and behind you.
Hi, Jim Croft, I just want to say that I'm happy if we just grade the road. And I have, and Kathy contested this, I sent a note last year to the DPW thanking them to grade it in a timely manner. I'm happy with that. And they should be recognized for that.
Mr. Holbert?
Yes. About the brush cutting, the, I'm just going by East Ditch Field, I try not to travel the roads too much, you know? They're in pretty bad shape, but anyway. The brush really has to be cut back more than they are now. It is bad. Because I know, if you go too close to the side of the road, you're going to get your vehicle scratched, you know? And that's, and I, I approached, I believe, the Public Works Department at least one time last year, or previous year, and, you know, mentioned that, but, you know, they gave me the excuse that you can't really cut back too much, you get erosion, you know, because I know East Ditch Field, it's really bad. That should be dug out, but, you know, you're digging against, you know, you're just going to keep running on the come, so I don't know what you can do, but, but right now, it's really bad. The brush coming, what's happened, the rain and the snow on some of the, on some of the brushes, pushes down, and overhangs the law, so. And on the other matter, the gentleman back here has mentioned something about the road grading. Well, that's, that's fine, but usually when you, when you grade road, and almost Murphy's Law, it's going to rain the next day. You're just having soup mess again. So, that's coming back to that, on the road base we've done.
Thank you.
Yeah, part of it is the equipment. Our grader, Matt, 30 years old?
It's 90. It's 1990.
1990. Almost, almost 30 years old. She ain't what she used to be. The boys have to pick the dampier days to cut the road. It doesn't cut a dry road. It won't. Where are you? The old grader won't cut a dry road any longer.
Yeah, it's getting tougher all the time.
Yeah, so they wait till after rain, and unfortunately, that contributes to the slimy effect. A grader is a very expensive piece of equipment. It is on our radar, but we still haven't figured out how to pay for it. So, we're looking at options such as rating equipment, and making this grader go as far as we can. Obviously, at some point, we're going to run out of luck, and something's going to happen to where we can fix it. We've been fortunate, it's lasted us well, is still doing a halfway decent job. But equipment is something that we are going to have to very deeply consider in the future. In the meantime, our road crew is doing the best they can with what they have. I have the one thing they're doing a good job, although there are a number of people who say my road gets the most attention in the town.
Thanks, neighbor.
I don't think they're going to hold it.
Anyhow, the road crew, I think, is doing a good job with what they have, which we need to give them time and patience. Thank you.
In the back?
Abby Miller. Should we, I know we allocate a certain amount of funds to go over the new equipment repair fund. If we know that this grader is coming down the road, albeit two years, five years, 10 years, should we maybe have a discussion of increasing the dollar in anticipation of this?
Can you hold that thought until we get to that article?
Yes.
And then you will be free to amend.
Okay.
Okay? Mr. Stanley?
Paul Stanley, I would like to move the question.
Okay, you can move the question. There are seven people who will back you up on that. Way more, okay. The question is moved. So, we will move to vote.
Point of order.
Yes.
I believe a motion to move the question requires a vote. Seven people support the motion.
Yes.
Then there's a vote. Is that what we're doing right now? We're voting on moving the question because it can be voted down.
Yeah, okay. You can do that. Thank you for the reminder. Sometimes doing rubber tools and orders is a little like a jigsaw puzzle, and you don't have all the pieces necessarily. And I appreciate those who have some knowledge for prompts, and not too often, but. So, we are, we are voting on whether to, we're voting on whether to vote on the article. So, a yes vote means. So a yes vote means, yeah, we'll stop discussion and we'll carry on to the vote. A no vote means we're going to keep talking about it. So all those in favor of moving the question, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes appear to have it, the ayes certainly do have it, and we will move to the voting on the question. Shall the town appropriate $120,000 for dirt work? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it and the article, Article 9 is passed. Shall the town, this is item 10, appropriate $10,000 for a paving grant or grant fund, which means matching funds for grants? What do you wish to do with this article?
What are you doing, Mr. Irwin?
It's been moved and seconded, that the town should appropriate $10,000 for a paving grant fund, matching funds for grants. Are there any questions or comments?
Phil Irwin, could you explain the nature of the grant and what we would get for matching funds with $100,000?
Matt, do you want to take that one?
It's a state grant.
I have to be a process volunteer.
Okay.
Your question should come to me, and then I would ask you, then you can ask Matt, all right? Okay, go ahead, Matt.
William Doitt, it's a state paving grant. It's a two for, 80/20 match, and paving is so expensive that we like to have the match available before we apply. I think it was three years ago we did one, and it took all our, you know, matching funds that we had, so we're trying to just build up the fund. So I'm thinking next year we're going to get the grant, we'll have enough without having to raid the kitty, basically.
And then what would we purpose with the grant once it was decided?
It's blacktop.
Blacktop.
It's paving.
Sorry, say again?
Paving grant, so it'd be blacktop.
It would be?
Blacktop.
Asphalt.
Asphalt.
Paving.
Paving.
Mr. Lentz here.
I'm just curious if there's any area that's been identified that would be paved.
Is there an answer?
Probably the second half of the post road. The part on East Bakerfield Road, we probably will take up this spring if it's just, you know, that-
There's a few sap trucks that have made a bit of a dent in that.
A little bit. They helped.
Any other questions or comments? Any other discussion? Wait, hang on just a second, Bill. Yes.
What part of East Bakerfield Road are we talking about?
It's-
Matt, yes, if you would like to answer that question?
It's just past the corner of a waterville to where it hits the dirt road. It's really, it's not the whole thing, but there's a section there that it's just alligator so bad and the sap trucks are just, among other things, are just-
By the campground, that area?
No, I'm reading.
More to the pond, right.
Sorry, I can't even hear the discussion, so I can't imagine that everybody else can.
I'm trying to figure out what part of East Bakerfield's-
I got that part.
Okay, go ahead.
It's the last 500, maybe 600 feet of it that is paved right now.
Oh, I see, okay.
If you drive on it, you'll see.
I just let me say that, I think.
Every day.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Yes, sir.
And the dim recesses of my foggy memory, it seems to me there was something about some compensation on behalf of some maple sap truck owner, and helping to maintain this. Is that, is that still ongoing or did it ever exist at all?
Is anyone here who can answer that question? Did we ever get money from a maple company regarding that?
I do not believe we've ever received a penny from anybody, but there have been, I'm not going to name names, there have been some loads of gravel that have been delivered.
Okay.
To a town with gravel pit.
Wait, Jim.
Pardon?
Matt, did you have anything to add to that?
No, that does the same thing.
Okay. And Mr. Lentz here?
I was just pointing out that they're delivering gravel to a town with a gravel pit.
Yeah.
That's a big deal. I mean, we've got, we've got problems not just on the paving, but on the road, East Bakerfield Road on up to Cold Hollow.
Right. Okay. Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
I have, James Croft, I got a point. I imagine that the DPW has a certain schedule on when they grade the roads. But I was thinking, this is just an idea, there is a section, I live right at the East Bakersfield Line going up to Cold Hollow, and a lot of the sap trucks are going up in the spring to the top of the hill taking a left. I'm not against meatball sugar or anything like that, but I'm just saying it's getting a lot more use than the rest of East Bakerfield Road. Has DPW ever thought, or the selectmen and so forth, talked about maybe grading that section up to the top of the hill more often than the whole road? Because you get a lot of heavy use from farmers doing, you know, preparing the fields for the summer for, you know, the norm and so forth. You've got sugar trucks going up there. It's getting a lot more heavier use than it used to, and the roads are getting a little bit rougher. And that's why I said I appreciated them grading it because it's getting so much more use than it used to. You've got a big sugar house up at the top of the hollow now, 40,000 taps or something like that. That stuff's getting taken out. And when they take these sap trucks out, they don't go East Bakerfield Road towards Fairfield, they're going down East Bakerfield Road to catch on the horseshoe, get on West Tyler Branch, because that's tar. They don't have to deal with all the messiness of the road, so that's how they're bringing it, it seems. So I'm just thinking, they may want to have a heavier schedule in that area of grading than other parts of East Bakerfield. Just an idea.
Mr. Ross, did you have? Mr. Lawyer?
I appreciate that you're having problems with the dirt roads, but that should have been discussed under, there were, we're discussing the matching paving fund. And I certainly would be willing to discuss this with you at a select board meeting, but uh-
Right.
Okay.
I deemed it relevant because we're replacing a grader, so.
Well, that was under dirt works.
Sorry? Okay. Paying the rent, is that, yeah, okay. We're, we're still discussing, apparently, shall the town, I don't remember, 10, shall the town appropriate $10,000 for a paving grant fund, matching funds for grants? Mr. Irwin?
Phil Irwin, this is related to paving, but I know it's a state road, but the condition of our primary intersection here in town is horrible. I think someone's going to break an axle on some of the holes that are right there at the turn, East Bakerfield Road on the, on the way. Is the state being responsive to the town relative to its paving? Is that something that, are you able to take that up with our representatives?
Certainly.
Wait, wait, excuse me? Ross. Mr. Lawyer, please answer the question.
Certainly, that would be something that should be brought to Mr. Greg Warrior's attention. There have been at least one other complaint about one way next to the post office within the town, within the state's right of way, excuse me. That one was deferred, the response was something to do with, I don't deal with potholes on town property, but it was on, it's in the state right of way.
Okay. So remember we were talking about-
Paying.
Paying, yes, but we're talking about appropriating funds to put in a, an account that will be matching funds for grants, we may or may not get it. Okay? Any other relevant comments and discussion? Brian?
Brian Steele, last year we sent, I can't remember, technically, inside the town report, a request from the state to work on Route 36. As always, the state did half the job. I don't see Mr. Greg Warrior here or any representative from the state. I'm curious if we're going to press that issue again.
And one sec. Yeah, sure, go ahead, Mr. Irwin.
So I can answer that question. The contract for that work did call for that from Fairfield Four Corners to St. Albans to be done before the winter, and the second half from Four Corners Fairfield up to Bakerfield after the spring starts this year. So you should see similar paving as was done with that first half early in the spring
I answered you, okay. Pat?
I'd like to move the question.
Okay. The question, we have a-
I'll second that. Your lawyer.
Okay. Pat, I've moved the question, and for a second of that, that means discussion will cease. This, this motion, the motion to move the question is not debatable. We have to vote on it right away. So all those in favor of moving the question, which means ceasing discussion of this item, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Okay, we have moved the, moved the question, and now we're going to vote, vote on Article 10. 10.
11.
10.
Hey, I got one thing right. Shall the town appropriate $10,000 for a paving grant fund, matching funds for grants? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please speak up and say no. The ayes have it and the article is passed. Onto that item 11. Shall the town appropriate $10,000 for a bridge repair fund? What do you wish to do with this article?
Move. Move.
Does some down move, Sam? Alan Lawyer says second. Okay. Are there any, is there any discussion, questions? Mr. Irwin?
I'd like to ask if, after Irene, there were lots of mitigation efforts across the state to replace culverts and to improve roads, so that if there were flooding in any area, it wouldn't cause the kind of devastation that occurred there. Is the state responsive to our request here in Bakerfield relative to bridges and culvert repair to help prevent that, should we have serious flooding here in Bakerfield?
Is there someone who can answer that question? The question being, has the state been responsive in terms of mitigating future possible damage during severe storms? Have I paraphrased that correctly? Anyone? Mr. Lawyer?
Our number one concern for this account, particular account, is the Browns Bridge. Okay? And we're just painting in there, going, come on, bridge, you can last a few more years. This will make $55,000, which would cover the matching grant to replace that. We'll take the culverts as they come, and one at a time. Every once in a while, Matt picks up a little matching fund grant to replace this or that, but nothing major right now is in the works.
So is the short answer no?
Short answer is no.
Yeah.
I can answer that.
Gary Dunn, they do only FEMA's after it's happening. There is, there is grants for culverts over 36 inches and also bridge, class two bridge grants that it complied for, but the state does nothing unless it already happens with
Any other questions regarding Article 11, appropriating $10,000 for a bridge repair Seeing none, we'll close discussion and go to a vote. Shall the town appropriate $10,000 for a bridge repair fund? All those in favor of doing so, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it and Article 11 is passed. Article 12. Shall the town appropriate $225,000 to defray the general expenses of the town? What do you wish to do with this article?
So move. Gary Dunn, second.
Gary Dunn, second. Is there any discussion? This isn't the moment of silence. Okay, seeing none. Select board's going to get all the heat this year. We'll go to a vote. Shall the town appropriate $255,000 to defray the general expenses of the town? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and the article is passed. Article 13, lucky number 13. Shall the town appropriate $29,472 and 79 cents for the annual payment for the new truck? What do you wish to do with this article?
I'll make that motion, be a lawyer?
Any second.
Gary Dunn, second.
It's been moved and seconded, that the town should appropriate $29,472 and 79 cents for the annual payment for the new truck. Is there any discussion? In the back?
How many years are left on the payment on that truck?
Wait, I'm sorry, I was saying your name again.
How many years are left on the payment on that-
What would you say your name?
Your name. Glenn Bocken.
Thank you, Glenn.
How many years are left on that payment on that truck?
Mr. Lawyer?
One year.
One year left. Okay. We're, are there, is there any other discussion on this article? 13. Lucky number 13, the last time we have to vote this particular number. $29,472 and 79 cents for the annual payment for the new truck. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of appropriating $29,472 and 79 cents, I will have that number memorized, for the annual payment for the new truck, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and the article is passed. Item number 14. Shall the town appropriate $15,000 to the new equipment fund for future purchases? What do you wish to do with this article?
Alan Lawyer, so move.
Could I have a second? It's been moved and seconded, that the town should appropriate $15,000 for the new equipment fund for future purchases. Is there any discussion? In the back?
Abby Miller, I'm going to circle back to what I brought up before. If we know a grader is going to be in the works in our future, whether it's, like I said, two years, five years, 10 years, I make the suggestion, obviously I have no idea how much grader is, and I'd probably cry if I saw the bill, but I try to suggest if we know this is coming, and that's one of the townspeople's biggest complaints, is the roads in the springtime being graded, maybe we need to consider increasing this number, so we are a little more prepared when that bill does come for at least a down payment or whatever we need to do.
Are you wanting to amend this article?
Yes. I don't know how much we should amend it to, if somebody can offer insight to that, I'd really appreciate that, but.
I have a point.
Momma, Mickey Crib, I have a suggestion. If we're at the end of a payment for a truck this year, could some of that money, I don't know if we can commit money to next year now, but could that be considered for future?
Yeah, I don't believe we can do that. It's not being warranted.
I have another point of order, you would, I don't believe we can increase the amount that's warned. I think we can only amend it to decrease, like possibly to be wrong.
I believe, according to my most recent training, that's, that's not true.
That has changed.
That was changed.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Ross?
Yes, ma'am. On page 23, dispersment of new equipment funds. As we just stated, truck number two will be paid off this year, next year, sorry. If we were to increase- If we were to increase this amount to $25,997.33, we could double up the payments on truck number one, giving us two paid off vehicles and allowing us to bank a little extra money next year to put towards the greater. That's, it's a suggestion, it's something we've discussed a little earlier. Obviously, it's a pound decision, so I just want to kind of pre-.
Yes.
Sutowski, I have a question. What is the parts and the cost of a greater?
$275,000, this?
Ross?
A little history lesson. When I bought this greater 30 years ago, in the couple of years following, it was Austin, Western. So, what happened then was we had to buy a greater because we couldn't rebuild that one. We had to have the parts made and the family and the shoe shop. So, my question is, how much does it cost to rebuild the greater you got now? And how far do we want to go? I know it had all hydraulic motors, which was the state of the art. Can you still get the hydraulic motor, the individual drives? Or is John, you're saying, is obviously, that's my question.
Matt, would you address that?
Parts are still very available, Ross. It was just there was one part inside the motor that the greater would have to be split, motor taken out for a roll pin. It was a very expensive job. You'd have to do it in a place like Valencourt, but it was, it was $10,000, $15,000, I think it was. The estimate to that particular part, that wasn't the motor job or anything like that.
See, I have a problem with rebuilding something you can get parts for. I've done it three years. And $10,000, $15,000, it seemed like a lot of money, but it appeared to rock jobs.
How much?
Yeah. I don't mind spending $10,000 every year. Because your equipment, your expense on a greater was $23 if you wish. If I read the article right, it says $23 a greater. I don't know where the other part's going, but $23 is like, I'll take that. How about Mike Furbish?
Is there, is there other discussion? Mr. Irwin?
The discussion pertinent to the equipment fund, yes. Matt's truck is having some pretty bad problems with the rear end. So, we're going to have to make a decision as to whether that gets repaired or replaced as well. It's never ending, unfortunately.
So, if I'm interpreting correctly, all of this discussion is pertinent to whether someone wants to amend the article to increase the amount that we say. Mr. Lantier?
I think it would make sense to, for the Select Board to come forward with a proposal for next year about the greater and about the financial implications of it, rather than just improvising a budget at this time. There is some information, but we don't have all the information. We have no way of comparing the cost of the new greater with maintaining the old greater. I mean, I'd like to be able to see all that information if that's...
Okay, wait, just a minute. I believe that such a suggestion is appropriately considered under any future business.
That's the amendment.
You're asking the Select Board to present a proposal that's not relevant to the new equipment fund.
Okay, I'm saying then that I do not, I do not feel that amending this motion in anticipation of paying for a new greater is appropriate at this time.
Okay. Any other comments and discussion, Mr. Irwin?
Mr. Lantier, we have been doing research and we have been soliciting cost estimates for repairs for both the truck and the greater. And they are both being diligently looked over in comparison to new equipment. This is not something we are willy-nilly chasing after because we feel it.
Hold on, I don't want to get into this kind of level of exchange here.
The point is, it is being researched and we are doing our due diligence on it.
Jim, I think you've talked more than twice already and I think that's, I have to cut you off. Joy?
My question, I guess, is go back to Abby's, not amendment, that's not a number. We can't amend this without a number.
Right.
And I haven't actually heard a number.
I haven't heard an amendment.
I guess what I'm hearing from Jim is that to just randomly throw out a number so that we can amend this is not feasible.
It's feasible, but he's opposed. Mr. Ross?
I made the recommendation that we amended it from $15,000 to $25,997.33.
Excuse me, there was no formal amendment?
No, I made the recommendation, the suggestion.
Yeah, okay.
In order to make that extra payment on the truck, so that next year, if we come back with $15,000 again for a new equipment fund, that that money would go directly there and we would start building on whether it be repairs or new equipment.
Is that a motion?
What?
Is that a motion to amend?
No.
He was throwing a number out there.
Mr. Irwin, I'd like to know, based on the preparation of the sound report and all of the financial statements, whether it is proven for there to even be a consideration to increase any of these motions. Increasing this $10,000, I can see your point that you would pay off the front payment, but is that in the best interest of the overall budget? Perhaps add $10,000 could be used elsewhere in the town. I'm just not sure if there's been sufficient deliberation to say we shouldn't vote on this article as it is, rather than try to amend it here in town.
Okay, any other discussion? Go ahead.
I'm not minimizing what everybody is saying and I agree, obviously. And I think the Select Board has made it clear that they're already doing their homework on looking into the best possible route for the town to go. But at the end of the day, the bottom line is, we are going to either have to spend a significant amount of money to repair a piece of equipment that's 30 years old, or we're going to have to buy a new greater. So, I would like to make the motion that we do increase the new equipment amount from the $15,000 to the $25,997 in anticipation that one way or the other, whether it's the greater or something, we are going to have to buy new equipment at some point.
Okay, we need to make that a little shorter, so without the interpretation.
Make the motion to increase the new equipment fund from $15,000 to $25,997.33.
Okay. We have an amendment. Is there a second to this amendment?
All sadly, so move.
Okay, it's seconded, moved and seconded that we shall amend Article 14 to read, "The town shall appropriate $25,997.33 for the new equipment fund."
Bill Irwin, I'd like to ask the Select Board, is that additional $10,000 something that you feel is appropriate, given the rest of your knowledge of the budget that we have before us?
Mr. Irwin?
Do I feel it's appropriate? I feel that for new equipment expense, it is going to get used. As to exactly where it gets used at this moment, I cannot tell you. It will be where it's needed the most. I can promise you that.
So, let me just ask, if we understand that this is not sequestered money, this is...
This is new equipment. This money set aside for new equipment.
But whether it gets spent on a truck or a greater or whatever.
I can't promise very exactly.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Joy?
Is it earmarked for new equipment, can it be used to upgrade the present greater if that's more economic?
Mr. Irwin, do you have an answer for that?
In my opinion, yes. Equipment. New tires on old equipment.
Equipment, we already did the equipment repair.
Okay. Just a minute, I saw another hand. Mr. Irwin?
I somewhere lost, we voted for one truck today, but we're not voting for the other and yet we're going to take that money for the other.
We didn't vote on it.
Mr. Irwin?
Clarification, we're making payments on two trucks.
We had to vote for one today, but not the other.
Yeah, that's how the first one was funded.
Joy?
I'm not an expert, but I don't believe we can vote money for new equipment and spend it on old equipment. It would have to be voted into equipment repair and for that reason, I think we're better off waiting and see what we're going to do before we vote money and vote it forth. Otherwise, next year perhaps it will be out of new equipment back into repair.
Okay, so you were taking in opposition to the amendment?
I don't think we can use it for repairs, okay?
I don't have a legal answer for that. I'm not a legal expert. Are there any other questions? Mr. Dummer?
Comment, I guess. This money, if we increase it from the $15,000 to the $25,000 or whatever it is, that money could be spent, I believe, to pay off truck number two.
Yes.
That's paying it for, even though the truck is no longer new, it could be used to pay off that truck.
That's forgetting you, that goes to the original idea.
Ross?
Why should we pay off the other truck a year in advance? We have a budget, we have a plan. Why are we rushing to add $10,000 more to this?
Because we would like to purchase a new truck number three that's 16 years old and has an $8,000 bill waiting to go into it, if nothing else. And it's badly, neither of the latter are paying.
But you actually didn't ask for less than $15,000.
Towards the new equipment fund, yeah.
Yep.
There's actually a number.
I understand that.
Let's not have a whole lot of back and forth here. More questions, Ross, please?
Oh, well, I don't understand why we should be jacking it up another $10,000. What they asked for was 15.
Okay.
That's my point.
Okay, I hear that you're opposed to the amendment.
Right.
Okay. Are there, are there any other questions? Discussion? Seeing none, we are voting on the amendment. You can vote the amendment up or down and then we will be again voting on Article 14, either as amended or as originally written, depending on the fate of the amendment. Okay, is everyone ready to vote? All those in favor of amending Article 14 to read, "Shall the town appropriate $25,997.33 to the new equipment fund for future purchases?" All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
I believe the noes have it and so the amendment fails. Yes. Joy?
We either need to change the wording of that article in future years because we kind of saying you can't spend that on purchases we've already made. It says for the future purchase of new equipment. I can't spend it on things that we've already bought unless we change the wording of that article.
I encourage you to submit that and write it to your Kathy after the Select Board as a suggestion for next year. Yes, sir?
That was a vote that was very close. I moved that lead to an actual count.
Okay, you want a paper ballot?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. Just a minute, we're not done, we're not done with this one yet. Okay. Okay. Scratching my head here. I have declared, I declared in my judgment that the amendment failed and I think we're done with that. However, we haven't called for the original.
The original.
So, this is what I'm trying to balance here. Okay. Can you get seven people to say they want a paper ballot? If you want a paper ballot on this issue.
On the amendment.
On the amendment, stand up, please. It's five. Need seven. Okay, then the failure of the amendment in my perception of the vote stands. Okay. So, now we're back to Article 14, "Shall the town appropriate $15,000 to the new equipment fund for future purchases?" Joy?
I would like to amend the article to say the town appropriate $15,000 to make payments on purchase of new equipment. If we say future, we can't make the parking out of that. We need to take the word "future" out of that.
Okay, so you would like to amend the article to read, "Shall the town appropriate $15,000 to the new equipment fund for equipment purchases?"
For payments on equipment purchases, yes.
For payments?
On equipment purchases.
On? Payments on?
For equipment purchases. "For" is a good word.
Yes.
Can we just leave it at new equipment fund, period?
Yes.
Yes. That would be fine.
Wait, wait a minute.
Someone just said they can't have it as a new equipment fund.
It's the name of the firm. Mr. Weskow?
I'll ask, this one is going to set up along with Mr. Allen. Originally, the equipment repair fund was tapped at a certain age. And when it got to that number, it rolled over into the new equipment fund. So, when did that stop happening and...
It's still not.
So, what's that? I mean, we're talking about something we don't even need to talk about because the way the funds are set up, it's only going to get so high and it's only going to the new equipment fund anyway.
Okay, here you are.
Yeah, this was made in about 1991 by three selectmen. I can tell you that.
Okay.
That's where it started. Just the way it's worded.
Yep.
I can tell you who they were if you want.
Thank you, Ross.
Yep.
Joy, do you still want to stick with your amendment?
I do. I don't want that word "future" in there.
Okay. So, is there a second to this amendment?
Abby Miller, I second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend Article 14. "Shall the town appropriate $15,000 to the new equipment fund, period?" For purchases?
For purchases.
For purchases. Taking out the word "future."
No.
No.
Wait. What? I'm sorry, what was that comment in opposition to?
You're changing it. For future purchases, you're going to take it out and then you're going to start using it.
Well, okay.
You start using it now, then it wasn't the intent.
Okay, I get it. You're opposed to the amendment.
No, you're changing it. To pay off old stuff.
Changing the purpose of the use of the money, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, you're changing it. I do.
Abby?
No, the new equipment fund, the financial application for us, I don't think we're changing it. Joy's point is that it says for future payments, which that would mean that we cannot make payments on a truck that we bought, say, three years ago, the way that's written, which we need to make these truck payments. So, her suggestion is to take the word "future" out so that we can keep making these payments out of this fund, which is what this money was allocated for.
Originally, I understand what Ross is saying, originally this new equipment fund was, um, named so that we can put money aside to pay for new equipment as the, the situation came up. And Ross is right, that if we change it from future purchases, that means we're probably gonna be paying it on things that we bought before and need money for. And then that money won't be there for the emergency purchases.
Yeah, that's what's, yeah. Yes. Ms. Lawyer.
In the new equipment fund, each year, there's money transferred from the equipment repair fund. If you look on page twenty-three, this year, this past year, we trans, there was a transfer of forty-four thousand five hundred fifteen dollars. That was not voted for future purchase, that is money that came from the equipment repair to the new equipment fund. So that can be used, I believe, to pay on the trucks, because it's not voted for future purchases. We've done that most every, if it was one year, we may have not done it or not done much because we didn't have the funds, but we've been transferring money. So that's there, I would assume, could be used for payments on a truck. As well as however much they decide to move from the equipment repair fund, which is over thirty thousand today, or at the end of the year, if they move some of that over, you're not using the new equipment for future purchases, you're using money you already had. I just, this doesn't know.
Ms. Lawyer?
Yeah, I agree with that position you stated and, uh, disagree with the amendment to, to read the word future on the basis that this fund is set aside so that if there's new equipment, you've got that money set there, it's not being used for the purposes, and it sounds like with this lawyer's description there, that there is a, a means by which the select board could find funds in the budget already to make an extra payment on the trucks.
Are there any other questions or comments? Hold on, Joy. Okay, go ahead.
In light of that, that there are funds that are not earmarked for future purchases, I withdraw my amendment.
Okay. Uh, is that fine with the seconded?
Yeah.
Okay. The amendment has been withdrawn. So now we're back to voting on Article fourteen. Shall the town appropriate fifteen thousand dollars to the new equipment fund for future purchases? All those in favor? No, you don't have to do that, we're voting. Fourteen. Shall the town appropriate fifteen thousand dollars to the new equipment fund for future purchases? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. With your permission, folks, I see that we have our representative to the State House is here, and he's not a registered voter to, to the town, but, um, I believe he would like to address us, is that true?
Yeah, sure.
Just a minute, I have to ask their permission.
Yep.
With your permission, this non-voter who doesn't reside here can address the group. Yes, and, and we also have Senator Cory Perrin here, so that's true. That may take us, unless we're very brief, till lunchtime.
We will be.
And I will encourage you all, uh, on behalf of the Historical Society, go have some lunch over there, it's a great lunch, and, and probably be recessing for that. Okay. Go ahead.
Oh, you're here to vote?
Oh, did I see, did I see any opposition? Okay, now you're on.
Thank you. I'm James Gregoire, state representative, Fairfield, Fletcher, Big Spire. Uh, we won't take up a lot of your time, we just wanted to introduce ourselves to anybody who doesn't know us. You know, we have a lot of things going on in Montpelier, so we won't get into each one of them, because it will take you the rest of the day. But we did want to, um, I said, introduce ourselves, let you know that we're always available to you. Feel free to contact us, uh, we have legislative emails, I have personal emails which are available. Phone number, um, all of this stuff is available on my Facebook page, online, um, my legislative email is jgregoire@ledge.state.vt.us. My, uh, personal email is Gregoire, my last name, eleven, at surfglobal.net, much easier to remember. My phone number is eight oh two nine three three two six six seven, again, all this is available online. But the real big thing, we just want you guys to know, we're here for you, it's an honor to serve you, I mean, an honor, a true honor. I've been in public service for over twenty years, and this is the greatest honor that I've had. It's really, um, great to, to be there on your behalf, um, and so I'm gonna turn it over to the senator.
Thank you, I'm Cory Perrin, uh, your new state senator, along with Randy Brock. Randy, wish you could be here, but couldn't, there's, it's a large county and you owe me the ten, so I, I started in Georgia, picked James up from Fairfield, head here, we're heading to Franklin next, or I'm heading to Franklin next. Uh, but I want to echo what James said, we've been to your select board meetings, uh, since we've been elected, we did it before the process, uh, we're open, we wanna, you know, bring government down local level. I was a state representative in St. Albans, and I appreciate the close relationship I have with my constituents there. I'm proud to be your senator, you know, my goal is to build that same kind of close relationship with you folks. Uh, we have a lot of issues that, uh, we don't hear when we're out at your doors, or we don't hear in the community that we have to deal with in the State House, um, and it's always nice to know where folks stand. You know, couple, you know, where we are in the legislative process, part of the reason we're not giving a huge update, a lot of things are still really up in the air, there's only one bill probably that is on its way to the governor's desk, and it's actually one that, uh, one of your town residents worked on, each three very close, um, there's a few minor changes in the Senate that'll, that'll go on to the House, and I expect them to, to adopt those that go on, but, um, you know, the budget adjustment's still not agreed upon, um, there's a few issues with lead testing in our schools. The Senate passed, uh, a bill that would pay for lead testing in all the public schools in the state of Vermont. We did do a pilot a year ago and found about seventeen percent of the cats tested, pos, uh, tested positive for elevated levels of lead, and, and the state wants to pay to test all the schools in the state, and then we also have money put aside in, in Senate version of the budget adjustment to pay for a good chunk of the remediation of that. House and us have little disagreements, so, so that's getting held up in conference committee. So, uh, you know, but other than that, crossover's the end of next week, which is the, the kind of halftime in legislature, when, when things kind of start to formulate more, and, and the second body gets to look at whatever piece of legislation, so, um, you know, in the Senate, we've seen minimum wage pass fifteen dollar an hour by twenty twenty-four, um, tax regulation of marijuana passed the Senate in the past week, um, there'll be a clean water, really governance bill that comes out of the Senate in the next week, basically localizing those dollars down, so, um, you know, things are starting just to really pick up and move, so there, there's not a ton to report on what's, what's final, and, and things will change, but, um, as Representative Gregoire said, reach out to us, let us know your opinions on these issues, um, we'll do our best to keep you up to date, and, uh, you know, we work for you, so, uh, it's our job to be out and available to you folks, so, I, I don't know what the moderator wants to do, but it, you know, Representative Gregoire and I can stand out for a few minutes outside, and if anyone has any questions or anything to ask us, feel free to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
One question. I would like to know what your plans are for Route Thirty-Six?
I hear you, we, we hit it, uh, a few bumps on the way up here, probably gonna be new, new front end put in my truck. So, neither one of us are on the Transportation Committee, we do have three Franklin County legislators though on the House Transportation Committee, including the Vice Chair, Representative Murphy out of Fairfax, we have Representative Savage out of Swan, and Representative McCarthy out of St. Albans City. Um, we will, uh, we will re-engage them, I know Part Thirty-Six got redone, you guys need much more than a topcoat, you need a full reconstruction. And that, and that's about a million dollars a mile for the state, so, um, we gotta figure out how to get that in, because you need what happened to one oh eight here, you know, that on Thirty-Six.
And I would just echo that, I am in constant contact with those three and other members of the Transportation Committee, and, you know, my big thing, I, I believe in efficient and effective government, so when you put two topcoats on the first half of Route Thirty-Six, which is just as bad as it was before, and then you start coming this way, from my, by my store in the center of town coming this way, holy Toledo, that road is bad, and I'm constantly telling them, uh, what we all know, you need a base, uh, a redoing of the basin, and I always get the political answer, well, James, that's expensive. I'm like, well, it is expensive once, but once you do it, you got twenty or thirty years. You know, redoing, uh, the topcoat, which some people say, well, you know, keeps people quiet for a little bit, and that's not how I, that is not how I run my business, we will constantly, continuously advocate for a better job, we will work with transportation the best we can, uh, we'll, um, create havoc and, and headaches until somebody listens to us, but we're, we'll do our best, um, but we're two people out of, um, a hundred and eighty, and we'll, we'll continue, uh, and we'll work with Transportation Agency as well, because I, I think they want to do it right, they just don't have the funding, so we'll, we'll try to figure something out, but, um, it's definitely not good.
Last year, there was a lot of complaints, and I heard from people in Fairfield, but there was surprisingly a lot of complaints from people in Fairfax, because they come up onto Thirty-Six, and so maybe you could engage the representatives and senators in Fairfax area to add to your, uh, your voice.
We do, and she's the vice chair, so it's, uh, the one thing that I'll tell you in transportation that's, I think is very important, they, um, they took the chair of the, the Transportation Committee off, who's been there for years, and put somebody on from Burlington who doesn't own a car, and they're, they're, they're taking, and it's, and you know, that's okay, I'm not, I'm not trying to say that's bad, but the problem is they're, they're taking limited funds, we only have roughly seventy percent of the money each year to do the roads that absolutely need to be redone, and so we're always falling further behind, and now they're taking a little extra and putting it toward electronic, uh, car, um, infrastructure and stuff, and they say the whole system's a little, but we don't have anywhere to get, there's not enough there to begin with, when you take, and, you know, you're not doing a good job, and you take even a little bit out, it's not, and it's really important, because we all drive cars, and I'll tell you, the story in Montpelier is not Republican, Democrat, right or left, it's rural versus urban. I was shocked, it is rural versus urban, and we'll continue to do our best to fight for the rural areas, um, Frank, uh, Franklin County, Gordon Ray's, and we're gonna do what we can do.
Mr. Dunham?
Paul Dunham, I'd like to change the thinking here a little bit and talk about a current problem, and that's education, it's a hot item, and where are you folks seeing what's going on in the state? We just had our local meeting last night, not many people there, but the people that were there, uh, have a big question about the lawsuit, what's going on, how we're gonna keep our schools going, uh, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I, I do serve on the Senate Education Committee, um, we've kind of been, so, most of you know the Act Forty-Six lawsuit that had, had been filed a, a few months ago, um, Judge Mallow declined to issue an injunction, so Act Forty-Six is, um, gonna go ahead with its, its July one dates, um, we're contemplating, uh, a delay in the Senate, but it really doesn't have the, the votes to delay it, allow folks to put it into place. I'm, some of the supports, but even my committee, it's split three, three, um, which means it dies, um, so I'm working very hard, um, with the majority leader, um, she's out of Brannanboro, and she has constituents who are caught up on this, and, and most of Franklin County is, and so, um, we're working really hard to find a solution to get some kind of a delay, to allow communities to vote and, and do the mergers effectively, um, but the issue generally is, is there's no real discussion on what's gonna happen after Forty-Six. The discussion in Senate Education is, is around tech centers, um, we're gonna be looking to allow you to earn your first year of an associate's degree through VTC at any of the tech centers in the state of Vermont, we're working with VTC, uh, to do that, it was a proposal from Governor Scott, and it's something the legislature supports, um, we're also looking at, would it be feasible to allow folks to earn their full associate's degree at a tech center, so that means someone from Bakersfield, student Bakersfield, could earn an associate's degree through VTC at Cold Hollow or at Northwest Tech Center, and, and we think that would help rural Vermont, but, um, those have been our discussions around education, we haven't, um, really jumped into the pre-K twelve stuff, um, yet in the Senate, anyway.
Mr. Root?
Uh, shall we, um, I respect, I guess it's more of a statement, and you're kind of operational, kind of a question about Act Forty-Six, is that Bakersfield worked really hard in order to get this passed, and to follow the law, put it in place by the legislature and the Senate, and we're being penalized because we followed the rules, while giving the other con, the other towns that did not follow the rules, and did not do their due diligence, and did not hold their meetings and hold their votes, and now they're being given extra time, and we're being penalized for that, and as a, and as a representative of the school war, I was like, we feel like we are being thrown under the bus.
I, I hear you, so H Thirty-Nine hasn't passed out of the House, will not be how it passes out of the Senate, um, that's just out of one chamber, um, our, our chair and our committee generally agrees with the concept you're saying, if we're gonna give delays, give everybody a delay, not the folks to...
The point is, is that we don't want a delay, we want this to move forward, we did our due diligence when we were supposed to do it, they did not, so why are we being punished by having this vote delayed?
So, again, you're allowed to delay no matter, or you're allowed to merge if, if that's what you choose July one, but delay would be places like, you think of Stowe and Elmore, uh, Morrisville the best example, they were actually, did their work, they, the Secretary of Education told them they weren't gonna need to merge, that their separate plans, refined the State Board of Education, then merged them in November anyway, so they're stuck trying to figure out teacher contract negotiations in six months, and all the pieces that go along, and, you know, a lot of that to figure out in six months is a short amount of time, and, and I definitely feel for them, they, they had a plan that was accepted by AOE, but the State Board changed it down in November. We have towns in this county like Franklin and Highgate who put plans together, and then their town residents voted unanimously not to accept them, so, we have to figure out those pieces, just, I get your concern, but, you know, if you brought a plan to the voters of Bakersfield and they declined it, and now you're stuck with four or five months to figure something out, i- i- it's tough to do, so I think, um, we're trying to be sensitive to that, um, across the state, and make sure those folks, um, feel, you know, work their way through all of that, um, you know, it, we've delayed Forty-Six through Act Forty-Nine ones already in some places, and, and we took the excess spending thresholds off, Forty-Six isn't what it was, when it, I was in the House when it passed, I didn't vote for it, um, but, um, here we are, and we're just trying to figure out how to piece it all together in, in the most effective way possible, because what, some of us are fearful of is that some of these towns will run the July one deadline, um, and what does that mean for their budgets, and ultimately, what does it mean for their students? If things aren't done, and so we have to, we have to make sure, you know, we're, we're putting students first here and figuring out, besides the politics, how do we get everything together so that they get what they need in their education next year?
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming.
James, I just wanted to tell you how much I appreciate your voting against H Fifty-Seven and, and giving, uh, the unborn rights, and I would hope that if it reaches the Senate, which I think it's gonna, that you would vote against that bill, I think it's unconscionable for this, for the people of this state to assume that a baby can be killed moments before birth, that it has no rights, that, uh, if, if the child is unborn, and that the child is unborn and in need of surgery, does not have a right to medical care, and I would appreciate it if you would do everything you can in Montpelier to protect the rights of viable babies.
Thank you. The only thing I'll say on that issue is that the way you're hearing here, there's a lot more complicated issues than, than just whether you're for or against, um, there's a lot of intricate details and protections that are, um, hold very high, that we're just boo-boo down there, so we tried to balance, you know, but, uh, yeah.
So, the Senate, from my understanding, might not, uh, take up Fifty-Seven in its capacity, um, the Senate seems more likely to put a constitutional amendment out, which would put it out to the voters of the state of Vermont in the next couple of years, that tends to where the Senate's going, but that would give everyone a USA and how you feel on that issue, and, you know, everyone has their deeply held beliefs on this issue, and, um, I think it's the best, most appropriate way, just like you guys are deciding issues on graders and trucks here, to have, you know, you know, to have those conversations locally and make your votes in the ballot box on that issue.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, for your patience and, uh, attention, uh, it is now ten minutes to twelve. It is now ten minutes to twelve. Yeah, we can probably do fifteen, and maybe sixteen, before we recess for lunch. So, Article number fifteen. Shall the town authorize the select board to receive and expend for town purposes any additional gifts, grants, or other revenue in excess of those calculated in the proposed budget? If a fairy godmother or father comes along and drops a ton of money on us because we're good people, then we have to let the town, or voting to let the town spend it for town purposes. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. That on Article fifteen, bottom of the page, shall the town authorize the select board to receive and expend for town purposes any additional gifts, grants, or other revenue in excess of those calculated in the proposed budget? What do you wish to do with this article? Any discussion? Okay. We'll go to a vote. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Hearing no-nos, then the ayes have it, and the article is passed. Article sixteen. Shall the town appropriate twelve thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifteen cents for dispatching fees? What do you wish to do with this article? Dennis and Don, so moved.
Laura Willie, second that.
Been moved and seconded. That Article sixteen should be adopted. Shall the town appropriate twelve thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifteen cents for dispatching fees? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go right to a vote. All those in favor of the town appropriating twelve thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifteen cents for dispatching fees, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying no. The ayes are above the noes, and the article is passed. Article seventeen, okay. Shall the town authorize the trustees of HF Brigham Library to use one thousand seven hundred dollars and ninety-four cents of surplus funds from the 2018 budget year for the library improvement fund? What do you wish to do with this article? It's been moved, is there a second? Add the bevy, second. Sorry, I'll get you next time. Okay. Is there any discussion on this article? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Shall the town authorize the trustees of HF Brigham Library to use seventeen hundred dollars and ninety-four cents of surplus funds from the 2018 budget year for the library improvement fund? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying no. The ayes have it, and the article is passed. Keep going? Okay. Article eighteen. Shall the town appropriate thirty-five thousand dollars for the HF Brigham Library for 2020? Add the bevy, moves. Abby Miller, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go right to the vote. If you wish that the town, the town to appropriate thirty-five thousand dollars for the HF Brigham Library for 2020, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying no. I heard a no, but I'm not sure if there was a no. In any case, it was only one or two. So the ayes have it, and the article is passed. Okay. Article nineteen. Shall the town of Bakersfield grant authority to the trustees of HF Brigham Public Free Library to spend monies raised by grants or contributions? What do you wish to do with this article?
Move it.
Nancy Hunt, second. Okay. Is there any discussion? Going, 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 going. Okay. We're gonna go right to the vote, then. Shall the town of Bakersfield grant authority to the trustees of the HF Brigham Public Free Library to spend monies raised by grants or contributions? If you're in favor of that, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, signify by saying no. The ayes have it, and the article is passed. I'm hearing some...
Let's see, he's going.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
I'm hungry.
Do you have something?
Nothing to do with that. I just wanna make an announcement that we're gonna have a celebration of life for our Ann Blanchard on the thirteenth of July at eleven o'clock at the Historical Society. The service will be eleven, and you'll have a luncheon soon after that. Anyone that would like to contribute towards a luncheon, give me a call. A little closer to July.
Brian, did you have a...
I'd like to make a motion to go to lunch.
I'll second that.
We moved and seconded that we recess for lunch. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What?
Aye.
We'll be back here at one o'clock. One hour for lunch. The dinner next door is by contribution, so can you... We are now rejoining after lunch recess for the Bakersfield Town Meeting. And we are on Article number twenty, which is on page ten in your book. We'd like to thank the Historical Society for making sure everybody was well fed. And hopefully, none of you will fall asleep. I've heard the coffee over there, it would be an antidote for that. Okay. Article twenty. Shall the town appropriate ten thousand dollars for the Maple Grove Cemetery? What do you wish to do with this article?
I don't know, I sense the moves.
Do I have a second? David Spencer, seconds. Great discussion, yes. Ron Markat, who's on the cemetery committee.
I've been waiting. I wanted to do this, to be sure we're all covered. Ron Markat, I'm one of the cemetery commissioners. And what we're voting for right now, the ten thousand dollars, is for maintenance, groundwork, and so on in Maple Grove Cemetery. And we've also been doing some restoration for a couple of years. And I've been, I've taken some photographs, and there's a couple of posters on the entranceway that you can look at on your way out. And I constructed a couple of maps for anybody who's ready to come along, look at them with me. And I'd be very happy, after the meeting, to go over to show you what the progress has been for the last two years for the cemetery restoration. Because we have done some work. It doesn't look it when you're done, because the stone is upright and looks good, and it looks like we haven't done anything, but we have. But before I mention any more of that, I wanted to give a shout-out, we're gonna flashback to Junior here. And I wanted to give a shout-out to our volunteer restoration crew, who was here earlier, now they're almost all gone, but I wouldn't mention them anyway. But those of us who've been working out to do some restoration among the stones. We got Willie and Stacy Mayer. Willie's working, and Stacy's here with us. Glenn Paquette. Larry Westham, he's our Energizer Bunny. This guy never stops. But his work ethic is outstanding. He does very, very good work. Gary Deppen was out there with us, too. He entertained us at the same time he did some work for us. And we had, if I can pronounce this right, Bob Gattrow, who allowed us the use of his tractor. And we also had all RB, RNB construction allowed us to use his excavator. So far, we've been lucky. We've been doing some pretty good work, picking up some pretty old stones. There was a learning group, learning how to do these things without breaking something. And we've done quite well. We've done about forty, more than forty restorations so far. And there's some more to do. But what we have to do now is, is to repair some things that have broken. That's gonna slow us down a bit, but that's where we're at. We're shifting our priorities a little bit, because now what we wanna do is to concentrate on fence. Fence work needs to be done, gotta do some restoration along that. And what we've gotten so far is a couple of estimates. I mean, that's where we're at. We've got a couple of estimates on what it would take to redo the fence around the cemetery. One estimate is from forty-nine thousand to one hundred and nine thousand. And we said, thank you. I guess that old metal fence doesn't look so bad. So we're not gonna do anything with the metal fence. And now we're concentrating on doing something with the white fence. And so we're working on something to solidify a good estimate. That's where we're at. We've got some stumps that we have to grind up and get out of the ground. We, it doesn't take very long. Two years ago, when we knocked down six trees, that was like six thousand dollars, if I remember right. And grinding up the stumps is not, not cheap either. If anybody wants to volunteer and give up one of their chainsaws, they already have one. We're gonna let, prefer them to do it. So that's basically where we're at. We're continuing with our restoration. We're pretty pleased with our progress. I think it's coming along pretty good. And the ten thousand dollars to get back to that is just, it's nothing to do with restoration, that's just maintenance. And we have to have that on an annual basis, basically, in order to keep plodding along and have enough money left for the following season to continue. And that's where we're at. I just wanted to give some credit to some of the people who have done some work for us.
Yes.
I'd like to thank Darren. Thank you for all you do.
You'll get away from my wife.
Nikki, Nikki Krebs, so...
Round of applause for Penny for her fifteen years of service on the cemetery commission.
Okay. Now, Nikki, go ahead.
Last year, and I believe the year before, we actually gave some additional funds for the restoration piece. I think we bumped it up by five thousand last year. And I'm wondering if that ten thousand, I think, John said, was just for maintenance. Do we need to be looking at the restoration piece? Because this is right in the center of our town, and people see it, and the work we've done is so good. So do we need to add...
Mr. Markat, would you like to answer that question?
Yes. The money that the town votes at present time, we won't see a cent of it till December. And we always have to keep a slush fund put aside for the following year, because we aren't gonna get any money for the following spring maintenance. So the money that was given last year is still there. There's about five thousand in excess right now with respect to what we have. And that five thousand is probably gonna go towards the fence. And who knows what else might go wrong? It doesn't take long for something to go wrong, it costs a little bit of money. So the five thousand that you gave last year is now on the forefront because of the fence work.
So the fence issue, I mean, we, as I said, we're right in the town. People drive by that cemetery every day, and it looks lovely when that fence is up. I'm imagining it's gonna cost more than five thousand dollars. Is that something that the town will be able to contribute money to this year? Cost comes up this summer. How would we pay for that if it's in the center of your five thousand dollar slush fund?
Well, what we've known in the past is we had to go on our knees and visit with our select board and ask for money in advance, because they know the money's gonna show up in December. So we do have some money laid aside for that maintenance stuff and for the restoration. And if we run into trouble right now, I suppose we could go to the select board. But right now, all we got is five thousand. That's it, for anything that comes along, we do some restoration. If you wanna put more money in, that's up to the town. We can get by this year with what we intend to do, because, you know, we're not full-time. We're just gonna be out there for a few weeks this summer. And hopefully, people will allow us to use their equipment. Because that class of nickel, they're a tool. And so far, we've been lucky with that. And people have been very gracious in helping us out. But, yeah, it's a limited amount, and there's more work to be done.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking to ask you, ask you a question. I'll ask you, but...
Thank you.
I'm just wondering, I know this is...
Remind us...
Oh, Jim Crow.
Thank you.
From Bakersfield. Question is this, I remember two years ago, I know this is kind of an aside, but I'd be interested if you could address it, because this did come up at the Town Meeting. There were some stones that were cleaned incorrectly. And I was wondering if that was permanent damage, and if they get any compensation for it from the company that did it. Do you get a question?
Yes, I think I understand your question. So far, there's no resolution to that. Everything is as it was. We haven't really addressed any damage that we could point our finger to.
Wasn't a company brought in to clean the stones and the marble stones, and they did it correctly?
That's a tough call.
Define incorrectly.
Yeah, that's a tough...
Well, I heard it was brought up at the time that it was done. It could damage the stones?
I can't see where the cleaning that was done is associated with the damage. That's a tough call.
Well, I'm just asking a question that came up after that.
Right.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, we will vote on Article twenty. Shall the town appropriate ten thousand dollars for the Maple Grove Cemetery? All those in favor of that article, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, and the ayes do have it, and the article is passed. Article twenty-one. Shall the town appropriate thirty-five hundred dollars for the purchase of fireworks for the Independence Day Celebration 2019? What do you wish to do with this article?
So moved.
Add the bevy, moves. Mary Lumbra?
Second.
Mary Lumbra, second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go right to the vote. Article twenty-one. Shall the town appropriate thirty-five hundred dollars for the purchase of fireworks for the Independence Day Celebration 2019? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Yep. Ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and the article is passed. Article twenty-two. Shall the town appropriate five hundred dollars for the public announcement system for the Independence Day Celebration and for Town Meeting Day? What do you wish to do with this article?
So moved, add the bevy.
Abby Miller, second.
It's been moved and seconded. That the town shall appropriate five hundred dollars for the public announcement system for the Independence Day Celebration and Town Meeting Day? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go right to the vote. All those in favor of the town appropriating five hundred dollars for the public announcement system for the Independence Day Celebration and Town Meeting Day, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. No no's, so the article is passed. Article twenty-three. Shall the town appropriate three thousand dollars for the Bakersfield Historical Society? What do you wish to do with this article? What do you wish to do with this article?
So moved.
It's been moved.
Bill Orwin, second.
Bill Orwin, seconds. Is there any discussion? Sharon?
Is this, I don't have the, the legal. Is this a usual expense to the town that I just announced on top of or?
It has been for a while.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Seeing none, we'll go right to the vote. Shall the town appropriate three thousand dollars for the Bakersfield Historical Society? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and the article is passed. Shalt, item number twenty-four. Shall the town appropriate two thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars for the Franklin County Home Health? What do you wish to do with this article?
So moved, path to Bevick.
It's been moved.
Second, Susanski.
Susanski, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go right to the vote. Shall the town appropriate two thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars for Franklin County Home Health? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and the article is passed. Article 25. Shall the town appropriate one thousand three hundred and forty dollars for Northwest Vermont Solid Waste District? What do you wish to do with this article?
So moved, you and Kimlin here.
Seconded, path to Bevick.
It's been moved and seconded that the town should appropriate one thousand three hundred and forty dollars for Northwest Vermont Solid Waste District. Is there any questions, discussion, presentations?
If I could, you and there's, there's a number of things that, that should be discussed coming forward to this year. The primary one is the fact that the drop-off site that's in town is going to be moved for a year. Because the state, well, at some point, I mean, the state is scheduled for this year, isn't it, right? Probably next year. Next year, whenever the state gets around to doing the work they're going to do at that site, the drop-off center is gonna move to Ennisburg, to that Lions Club property where they had the horse holster and Gary Days. That, that probably is going to end up being a permanent site there for the Ennisburg area. There's, the district has every intention of moving the site back to Bakersfield. The district does recognize that that's a less than ideal site down there. It's right in the center of town. I mean, there's noise issues, it's not particularly attractive. So, and it's been tough to identify a place, a location that, that can be used for that in a reasonable manner without breaking the bank. So, that's gonna be an issue going forward. Mandatory recycling has been moved, but that's gonna become a critical issue, or mandatory control, I'm sorry, in 2020 unless it needs to be. That being said, the district started thirty-one years ago and I've been the only representative in the town in the past. For years now, Melissa Dion has been pestering me to retire so she could take my place. She really thought this was gonna be exciting. So, as of today, I've designed my position as supervisor to the Northwest Vermont Solid Waste Management District. And I'm assuming since she's a warm body and said yes, that the select board will appoint Melissa to that position.
Thank you for your understanding. I guess that means we can no longer rely on you for all things waste.
Thank God.
Are there any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Shall the town appropriate one thousand three hundred and forty dollars for the Northwest Vermont Solid Waste District? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and the article is passed. Article 26. Shall the town appropriate two hundred dollars for the Franklin County Industrial Development Corporation? What do you wish to do with this article?
So moved.
Nana Allen, seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go right to the vote. Shall the town appropriate two hundred dollars for the Franklin County Industrial Development Corporation? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and that article is passed. Article 27. Shall the town appropriate one thousand one hundred dollars for AgeWell? What do you wish to do with this article?
I don't know what that is.
If, if, the, the article has to be moved and seconded before we can talk about it.
I move it.
Sharon Evans. And Sharon Evans moves and Path to Bevick, seconds. Okay, now, the question is.
I don't know what that is.
What is AgeWell? Mr. Lawrie.
AgeWell is formerly the Shandling Valley Agency on Aging. Okay, for more than forty years, AgeWell has provided services and support that allows seniors to stay independent and remain healthy at home where they want to be. We excel at integrating community resources, health services, and wellness programs to enhance and improve quality of life for all seniors in the Northwestern Vermont area.
Yeah, Path to Bevick. And that report is here on page thirty-seven of your town report.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, we'll go right to the vote. Article twenty, twenty-seven. Shall the town appropriate eleven hundred dollars for AgeWell? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and the article is passed. Article 28. Shall the town appropriate one thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars for the Northwest Regional Planning Commission? What do you wish to do with this article?
Path to Bevick, so moved.
Mark Deryus, second.
It has been moved and seconded that this article should be supported.
If I could, I'd like to, since I speak as representative of the town.
Okay.
Thanks. Yes, if you look on page thirty-one, you can see a report from the Northwest Regional Planning Commission about the work that it does. I am currently the representative for the town of Bakersfield as commissioner there. Sadly, when we, we lost our second commissioner Dennis DeBettic recently. And if anyone is interested in serving in Dennis's place, we do have a vacant position for that. Please see the select board, they could make that appointment if you're interested in it. I can tell you that this is a very hardworking group. We meet monthly as a board of commissioners and there are probably ten different committees that also meet monthly, a variety of issues from roads to water. And that's why during the session this morning, I asked about whether the state was living up to its obligations for this town. Because I take those kinds of statements of yes, they are, or yes, it is, or no, it's not, to the Northwest Regional Planning Commission. And we often will send a letter to the legislators expressing our lack of satisfaction. You may recall a bridge in Milton where there was a truck accident because the bridge was too narrow. We sent a letter to the governor and all signed it and they are replacing that bridge. So, if you have issues like that, bring them to the select board or to me and I'll try to represent those to the Northwest Regional Planning Commission. We'll try to represent this town as a member to the legislature and the governor. And again, if you're interested in working with us on the planning commission, please see the select board.
Are there any other questions, discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Shall the town appropriate one thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars for the Northwest Regional Planning Commission? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and the article is passed. Article 29. Shall the town appropriate five hundred dollars for the Mississauga River Basin Association? What do you wish to do with this article?
Paul Stanley, would you move the article, please?
Okay.
Mark Deryus, I'll second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that the town should appropriate five hundred dollars for the Mississauga River Basin Association. Are there, is there any discussion, questions, comments? Mr. Stanley?
Paul Stanley, I've reported on the organization in the past. I continue to be the vice president for the Mississauga River Basin Association. And just a quick update on what we've done in the past year. We have done some river cleanups, a couple days out, picking up tires, that kind of thing on the Mississauga. And probably one of the biggest activities is the water sampling that goes on. There is approximately forty sites that are sampled in some situations, every other week, most every month. That's going to be a challenge for us now because those samples were run in Burlington at the state lab and that is now moving to Randall. And so, we're hoping that we can pick up a little bit of grants to offset the cost of transporting the samples. We're getting together with other watershed groups to try and pool some of that transportation. Another thing that integrates the town and wanna thank the Screums for coming out and doing a fundraiser event at the Fourteenth Star this fall. We raised over six hundred dollars with that event. Brian and, and, um, are part of that group. They're gonna be playing over here at the Historical Society for the Sugar on Snow. So, we encourage everybody to come out for that. So, just a little bit of what the organization does and hopefully folks will support us. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions? Seeing none?
Question?
Yes?
Is five hundred dollars a good amount? Are you guys able to get the funding you need for grants and otherwise? And the five hundred just helps, or is that a critical? Should we see more?
Did you get an answer yet?
Never turned down more money, but. That was discussed. I think maybe next year we'll look at that. We discussed maybe, because there's several other towns that support us, Town Meeting Day. And we looked at raising that amount and we decided to keep it level funded for this year. But with that comment, we'll look at. The grants are what keep us rolling and it's, it's a tough battle because that's money that's, that you're always spending out and you gotta get it spent before you can have it coming in on the inside. So, and with our fundraising events, it keeps us moving. So, I appreciate the comment.
Okay, any other discussion? Questions? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Article 29. Shall the town appropriate five hundred dollars for the Mississauga River Basin Association? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and the article is passed. Shall the town, Article 30. Shall the town appropriate five hundred dollars for the American Red Cross? What do you wish to do with this article?
So moved, path to Bevick.
Second, Orwin.
It's been moved and seconded that the town should appropriate five hundred dollars for the American Red Cross. Is there any discussion? Yes, Ms. Krebs?
Quick question. I didn't see a report or a letter in here about what that five hundred dollars is for. I'm wondering if anybody can answer what that five hundred dollars would be spent on.
Mr. Irwin?
So, I don't know everything that they spend money for, but I can tell you that any time that there is a mishap at the town that involves a fire department or mass casualty with numerous ambulance services, that they will be on the scene there to help the first responders with food and coffee and water. But they do that any time that there's a need. They also can open a shelter as they have in the past in other towns should there be people that are, have to come out of the homes because they have electric power for some time, something like that.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote on Article 30. Shall the town appropriate five hundred dollars for the American Red Cross? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. There are no no's, so the ayes have it and the article is passed. Article 31. Shall the town appropriate one hundred dollars for Greenup Vermont? What do you wish to do with this article?
So moved. Nana Allen.
Is there a second?
Second, Mark Deryus.
It's moved and seconded that the town should appropriate one hundred dollars for Greenup Vermont. Is there any discussion?
Melissa Dion, is anybody running that in this town anymore? Anyone, I'd be willing to do that if I could just talk to somebody about it. Select board? Select board. Okay.
Contact person was Melanie Phillips, interim president. And if you wanna see us, I'll, I'll give you that information.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Okay, is there any other discussion or question? On Article 31. So, sure, we'll go right to the vote. Shall the town appropriate one hundred dollars for Greenup Vermont? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and the article is passed. Article 32. Shall the town appropriate two thousand dollars for the Fairfield Community Center? What do you wish to do with this article?
I think so moved.
So moved?
Second, Mary Lumber.
Mary Lumber, seconds. Any discussion, questions?
I would just say that they continue to have a meal every Tuesday. So, anyone who's hungry, go over to midday meal. If you have kids, your grandkids that need daycare, there's a great little daycare. And then you have new openings, I just read. And food shelf continues with the fresh produce coming from Hannahford or the other food bank. And the usual staples, so it encourages people to go, or take a bite.
Thank you.
Meals are always great, but more important is that people can get to dinner from other places. And just, if you live alone, it's great to have people to run from.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we were, we'll be voting on Article 32. Shall the town appropriate two thousand dollars for the Fairfield Community Center? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Town being agreeable, that article is passed. Article 33. Shall the town appropriate one hundred dollars for Vermont Rural Fire Protection Task Force? What do you wish to do with this article?
Paul Stanley, would you move the article? I'll second it, Mark Deryus.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the town should appropriate one hundred dollars for the Vermont Rural Fire Protection Task Force. Are there any questions or discussion?
I don't know what it is.
Okay, hold on. Go ahead, Mr. Stanley.
Paul Stanley, I'd like to address that question. And the Vermont Rural Fire Protection. Paul Stanley, I'd like to address that question, and the Vermont Rural Fire Protection Task Force helps fire departments specifically, I'm sure you can see them all around, with what we call dry hydrants, they're the hydrants, the pipes that are like this along the roads, near ponds, and that kind of thing. So that's one of their primary functions, is to help with the design and getting those in. We should recognize Troy Dair. He is an engineer that worked with that group for years. He has moved on this year, but the organization will keep going with the work that they do. They also help a lot with mapping of these fire protection sites, and also with the 911 addresses, that kind of thing. They're just a tremendous support to the fire departments across the state.
Thank you. Any other comments, question? Okay, we'll go to the vote. Shall the town appropriate $100 for Vermont Rural Fire Protection Task Force? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying no. The ayes have it, and the article is passed. Article 34, shall the town appropriate $95 for the Vermont Center for Independent Living? What do you wish to do with this article?
President Churchill, would you like to move the question?
No, you don't move the question, that asks us to vote. We just need a motion.
Just a motion.
Just, so moved, so moved works. Is there a second?
Ryan Steele, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the town should appropriate $95 for the Vermont Center for Independent Living. Are there any questions or comments or discussion? Seeing none, we should go right to the vote. Shall the town appropriate $95 for Vermont Center for Independent Living? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Lot of coughing, but no no's. So, we have passed Article 34. Article 35, we're closing in on the end here. Shall the town appropriate $600 for Northwestern Counseling? What do you wish to do with this article? Been moved by Mary Lumber, is there a second?
Second, Mark Durris.
Mark Durris seconds. Is there any discussion?
Just a quick point of clarification, the letter from them references Alberg and asks for $1,700, is that just a, they sent us the wrong request?
I think the base one just changed name.
I have one here for the base one, too.
And is the amount for?
Six hundred.
It's under twenty.
Yes. That's based on per capita.
Yes. Any other questions, discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Article 35, shall the town appropriate $600 for Northwestern Counseling? If you approve this article, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you disapprove, say no. You're being no no's, then the article is passed. Article 36, shall the town vote to exempt Bakersfield Volunteer Fire Department from property tax at 181 Main Street North? What do you wish to do with this article?
Robert Willie, so moved.
Mark Durris, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Mr. Lawyer?
Just as an aside, this is a renewal.
This is a renewal of a tax exemption that already exists. Okay? Any other questions, discussion?
Is this where the fire station is, or the other one down the other end?
This is for the south station, the new station.
Okay, any other discussion, question?
Just, Paul Stanley, for clarification, the so-called north station is owned by the town. When, when the fire department moved to our south station, it was donated to the town. So the town owns that property.
Okay, any other questions, discussion, clarification? Yes, sir.
The old station is, that is not a natural structure. Obviously, it just belonged to the town.
Town property, town property. Never been any kind of source.
Any other question, comment, discussion? Seeing none, we are voting on Article 36, shall the town vote to exempt Bakersfield Volunteer Department from property tax at 181 Main Street North? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, and I didn't even turn my hearing aid on. And the article was passed. Actually, I don't wear hearing aids yet. Article 37, shall the town authorize the select board to hire a grant writer? What do you wish to do with this article?
So moved, passed, and let it.
And seconded by Mark Durris.
They moved and seconded that the town should authorize the select board to hire a grant writer. Is there any discussion, Mr. Earl?
Can I just say, there's a lot of grants out there, and it's complicated to complete these grants, so it really takes a skilled person to work on them. So it seems very logical that the town would seek this. I just wanted to note for the community, the select board in particular, that if you find it difficult to hire a grant writer alone, or just the town of Bakersfield, the Regional Planning Commission is working to create mechanisms so that multiple towns can hire services. The Regional Planning Commission would coordinate the distribution of funds, the collection of funds to pay that person. That person would then work in each of the towns. So if Bakersfield doesn't have enough work for a full-time person, maybe multiple towns would, and it might be a way to stretch our tax dollars effectively for a position that's probably not going to be a ton of work, but certainly all that work is very important. We could reach out to the Northwest Regional Planning Commission to see if that's a happening, if you want to.
Yes, if there's paying this person.
Nancy? Sorry, did you, did you have a comment?
I was just going to say, an issue is paying this person, and if you do it through the regional planning commission, it would be a little good idea.
Okay. Mr. Crick?
Just wondering if the select board could address where we are in the process with this, are they ready to, do we know what we want?
Someone from the select board?
No, well, no, there's a lot of things we want, but we want a new town garage, and we want a new salt shed, like our neighbors are getting, but we're just exploring this possibility at this stage. But, yeah.
Sharon Hodes.
Question, do we have any idea of what this person would get, or if we were hiring somebody?
We're purely in exploratory phase. Wanted to, wanted blessings in the town, in case we found somebody that would, that found somebody that would fit in, and there are many people that actually, the select board has been approached, for someone who offered to write a single grant application
So cost is really a question?
Yes, huge one.
Mr. Stanley?
Paul Stanley, and got a call from our daughter during lunch break, and it's kind of interesting that our neighbors here, Ennisburg, had just voted to hire a full-time grant writer, which was part of the Ole Ennisburg Initiative that everybody's probably been reading about and aware of. And one thing, it's kind of interesting with Bill's comment, the other thing that's going to happen with this is there's more and more competition for these grants that are out here. And it's more money, and it's, there's always, I come back to an RBA, and you put in all this time in writing these grants, and then they get turned down. So it's, it's a pretty big risk in there whether you're going to get the grants, but if we get a professional in to write these grants, our chances of getting them goes way up. And I think that with Bill's comment, that it would be good for smaller towns to be pooled and working together to, but the thing you get into with that situation is, all the towns are competing for these same grants. So it's, it's hard to make that decision at the moment.
Yes.
Well, Ennisburg, didn't they just get a lot of grants? Isn't that what they did, all the different things they did over there?
Yes, and that's, but they're, they're looking for more, and what happened there, Polly, is that the volunteers, the volunteers that worked with the Ennisburg Initiative were doing the work, and those people are going to run out of steam. You burn them out, and you don't want to do that with your volunteers. So that's one thing that this, this person in this paid position was going to do, is to help relieve some of that work, the volunteers.
The only thing is, when you go in with another town, you think they'll work that hard for us as they work for themselves.
That's the point, that's the point. Quick question, Paul, did they say how much when they voted in Ennisburg they were paying, because the last couple ones I heard was $8,000.
Just from our conversation with our daughter, the number wasn't that high, but they really didn't have a, just it came out here, a good sound amount, that they were going to put forward to pay this person.
I heard, working in Ennisburg, right, or that was one of the numbers that they were proposing.
Right, right.
That's a little bit high.
But it's the return, you know, good, that's what you got about.
We need to write grants for Fairfield, wouldn't you, in Bakersfield? So that might be someone we need to approach.
The amount in Ennisburg that they're paying from taxes, because a portion of that person's pay is from a grant. So it's partially from a grant, and partially from taxes.
Is there any other discussion or questions about whether the town shall vote to authorize the select board to hire a grant writer? Yes?
Just a comment, I think as we listen to this, that it would behoove us to probably employ a part-time writer with other towns that are not contiguous, so that there wouldn't be the competition between Fairfield, Ennisburg, and Bakersfield. Maybe Northland Park and even the world.
I heard. Thank you, David. Yes, Rachel?
Just speaking from my experience with the Fairfield town grant writer, for one, she's thinking of a town the size of Fairfield, it's definitely a part-time position. The other thing is, is that it's, we're all, our towns are also different, and our needs are just slightly different, but I don't see a genuine competition arising. I think the good grant writer homes in on the grant that's right for that town, and they're excited to get a grant, no matter which county it's for, it's bringing money into our county. So I don't think we have to worry about that kind of competition.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on Article 37, next to the last? Seeing none? Let's go to the vote. Shall the town authorize the select board to hire a grant writer? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying no. I see no no's, and so therefore, the article is passed. Article 36, could I have a drum roll, please? Oh, you're right, it's 38, okay, excuse me. Article 38, now the drum roll. Okay, to do any other business that can properly be transacted at this time. Now, I will say that properly, I mean, it doesn't involve money, it's non-binding, and it's really, this is a part of the, the meeting where you can make announcements and so on like that. What do you wish to do with the article?
Well, I'd like to move that. I'd like to move the article.
Okay.
Seconded that.
Thank you, Jim Lynn, to your seconds. Penny?
Thank you, everybody, that made this meeting non-smoothly.
Sarah?
So last night at the school board annual meeting, it was brought to our attention that the school bus routes are not making the rounds to reach everybody who needs a ride to get to school. And the main, the person who's there lives on the basketball field road, and they have one car and three young children, and it's very difficult for them to get their oldest, who's eight, to school, especially since in the past, he was able to get the school bus right there, and went up the road, and turned around in the belt, at the Belvedere Mountain Road, and then went back downhill. But now the school bus doesn't come up there. And she wanted to come to this meeting, but unfortunately, in her job, she cannot get the time off. So I said that I would bring it up at the meeting, and just make the town aware of the changes with the busing, and the fact that there needs to be an approved turnaround in order for a bus to travel up some of the local roads. And I just thought that I'd bring it up for discussion.
What was the reason for that change?
I think it's a, I think it's a liability issue with.
Something new, though. Is it a new bus company?
Just, hang on, okay, sorry.
Does the select board want to speak to that, or David? Ask him a lot.
The board still.
Actually, if it has to.
I think David has the floor.
You're next.
That's my job. We'll see.
No more than that. I rode with the owner of the bus company, the principal, our highway foreman, road commissioner. They're already going to more locations than they indicated they were going to that day. That day, they indicated it would basically be one way, the Boston Post Road, east Bakersfield to the Joyl Road, and not much of anything else. State law, I think, indicates half mile, and they were working on making sure that they could be within a half mile of any of the children. Not sure that that's entirely possible. Mac and I asked what we could do as the town to enable them to go to more places, and they said, you can't. That's pretty much set in concrete, and the owner of the bus company is the last best judgment, and there aren't many competitors. We're, we're kind of stuck with what we've got, and I don't know if there's anything that we can do to make it better, because they indicated that day. Is Mac still here? Because he said, could we make a turnaround, could we grab a little more? We've got some roads. As I rode with them on the bus, and I don't think, I'm a truck driver, and I don't think I'd want to drive that bus on some of those roads. But that was their decision, and I know that there's going to be a lot of constituents that aren't going to be happy with that, but I don't know much of an alternative either.
Hold on, wait, please. Mr. Holbert?
I believe they've dropped the minibus, too, they've got large buses.
Yes, there's only two large buses.
So that's, that minibus, you go anywhere, well.
Pretty much.
Pretty much, but the big buses, you know, it's.
Pretty tough to turn around.
Yeah.
Mr. Lawyer, would you still want to say something? Okay. Someone over, yes?
Yeah, Robert Willie. So is that the issue, the size of the buses? Does that mean it's, I remember riding.
Yeah, Robert Willie. So is that the issue, the size of the buses? Cause I mean, it's, I remember riding as a kid, and it seemed like they were picking up kids everywhere, so what, what is the reasoning now that they can't? Or, or do you have, or do you have any, I mean, do you know how the answer is?
Mr. Gross, do you have yet?
I have to say, I, I have students, kids to go to the school. I also drive for said bus company. And I'm on the select ward, so I can kinda represent all.
No conflict of interest.
Yeah, no, no. The biggest issue is state law changes. And bus company policy. Bus company policy states that you will not turn around in a private drive. You know, around here, there's not a lot of other places, so you have to go where you can, and it limits where you can go in a lot of places.
Over here, yes?
Um, I'm wondering, that company is, because when I drive to work, I see a bus turning around in a private drive every day to Berkshire.
So.
Thank you.
So, uh, that would have written permission from the landowner. Uh, the company is Grand Avenue for carousel transit, is what it says on the sides of the buses. Based out of Swanton, pretty much the only company in this area. There's a small company in Franklin that serves strictly Franklin and Highgate, takes those kids to MBU. And first student, which I think serves Milton. And I don't, well, there's one truck that parks behind, yeah.
I do know it's Berkshire and Ennisburg that uses the same turnaround. Yeah, because it's close to the border of both towns.
And it, and it could quite possibly be the town truck turn. Cause we do have a couple of private drives in Bakersfield that are used by the buses, but they're also the town truck turners.
It might be either, I don't know.
Okay, Chad?
I think just the going-forward thought with this is that our principal, recognizing this challenge, but kind of having her hands tied, said that she encourages families to check when they're buying property. So it will have some population implications, because, I mean, I did not hear the road we live on being listed, and I know a upcoming kindergarten, a child coming to kindergarten in the fall, so it's kinda like, can you really put a kid a half a mile, you know, from a school bus? And I think it will have implications with people buying property. I mean, I'm just putting that out there, but, um, you know, we are a bedroom community. Kids can be dropped off at school at seven, and they can be picked up at five, but it is a ten-hour day for some kids as a result.
Uh, any other comments?
I just think it's our responsibility to be able to pick those children up, and it's gotta be an answer.
I talked about, she was very concerned with the little daughter, she has fight and also some health issues. And I was on the assumption, and I guess I shouldn't have been, that you had to pick up children, not from their high school, but this little guy's eight years old. And they said that he could walk to someplace to run, to catch the bus. An eight-year-old? I don't think so. Was two miles that he could walk to meet the bus. I think they could.
Is there other discussion?
Especially somebody could get that roll ready.
Catherine?
My understanding is, and I'm hearing that the road itself, there's no issue with. Is it a big bus that can't turn around up there? Can you get one more there? Is it just the bus company saying, no, I don't wanna go up that road?
Pretty much. From my.
Go ahead, Lance.
From my understanding is that the, an unsafe turnaround, there is another road up there, Belvedere Mountain Road. And the town, we've already kind of discussed it amongst ourselves, would be willing to put another half culvert and some gravel in there to do it, but nobody's made a request.
Is Brendan still? Mr. Gross?
The other, the other issue is time. Somebody that has a child that gets on the bus first, their, their child is looking at an hour bus ride in Bakersfield. You know how big Bakersfield is, so, um, the issue is, Bakersfield has a school board decided they only wanted two buses, they only wanted to pay for two buses. That in turn goes to a longer, uh, a longer route, more students on pickup, and the bus company.
Cheryl?
I just wanna let you all know that that decision was not made by school.
I don't understand. You're having trouble with something like this, and yet you pick them up all the way down Main Street. My kids have to walk. So I think it's important that you do it for the, the ones to have to get out there and get.
This question is for the select board. When they said that nobody's made a request?
That's correct.
Who needs to make a request?
Well, it could be, as far as we are concerned, it could be the bus company, it could be the school board, it could be a parent. Nobody has made a request. At the first, we heard of this particular incident, this last night. This is on Basswood Hill Road. There is a, there is a place to turn around, as I said, you can back into, um, Belvedere Mountain Road, uh, with a little bit of work. Because the buses are so long, you have to have a, a larger radius. So if we just wind the end of, uh, Belvedere Mountain Road, for instance, we could give them that. But you've gotta know about the problem first.
And the town requested?
She needs to come and talk to you, cause it's like.
We're the, we're the ones responsible for roads.
Catherine?
I, I'm, I'm hearing right now a whole room full of people requesting it, and I know it's non-binding.
Yeah.
But two, I just heard Mr. Ovid say not too long ago that, that we asked the bus company what we could do for them, and they said nothing. You can do absolutely nothing?
Pretty much.
Sounds like that would've been an easy fix.
We've got several parties involved, and none are, the only communication we've had was a parent coming to last night's school board meeting.
So, Robert, did you have something to share?
She pretty recovered it.
Okay. Other comments, questions?
I'm understanding that the school board member, that the bus company contracts are now covered by the SU. The whole SU contracts the same company for all the member schools, so that's where that contract came from. We have been having a lot of discussions about this, because there's more than just one parent that has this problem. That's the only parent that came to our meeting last night, but there are plenty of people that issue it. I mean, it's easy to assume that the size of the bus is an issue on the small backroads. I think we should, um, push them a little bit if we can, but we are in a tight spot, because as has been noted, we don't have any options. They're in kind of driver's seat, pardon the pun, on that, in that we can't say, well, no, this is what we want, we're not gonna do it. We'll say, it's about finding more drivers. In the past, it's been, you decide to do contract with another bus company, and all drivers, and one company to the other with the same drivers. So it's a difficult thing to fill this. It used to be, we owned our buses, we took care of our roads, and we could say where we were gonna send our best, and now we don't have that say anymore, so it's just something that I understand.
Thank you. Mr. Stanley?
Yes, uh, if we could, I don't know if we can leave that subject, but would like to announce that Bakersfield Volunteer Fire Department is gonna be doing a CPR class sometime in May. So, uh, we will, we haven't decided on a date, and we gotta get instructors together and that kind of thing, but we'll post the date once we get it set, and we'll post it over to the deli here at the town clerk's office, uh, that kind of thing. So, just to get your ears through, Audrey here. And would like to draw everyone's attention to our report, speaking of the Bakersfield Volunteer Fire Department. It's on page twenty-five, and commend our chief hall for doing such a good job with that report. But, uh, one of the projects that he mentions in that report is what we call simulcast. And our assistant chief, Robert Lilly over here, uh, and myself, uh, put a lot of work into that. Dave has been a very good connection, along with Sam, uh, between the fire department and the town and the select board. But that simulcast system has helped us tremendously, and Brian has helped us tremendously with communication here, and that's exactly what that project has done with the fire department. We had very, very poor reception with our radios, uh, and getting pages for calls. And if you don't, aren't aware of the call, you can't respond. So, uh, this has really helped us out. Dispatch has been a tremendous help in that. So I just wanted to give them a little bit of credit here. Uh, and would like to finish up, uh, we have a question. Could the moderator direct?
Mr. Lorrie?
Thank you, Phil, sir.
That would be madam moderator.
Yeah, uh, there's a question about the original CPR class.
Yeah.
Did that include basic curstage as well, is my only question? I don't think so. I think that is viewed as a just-for-CPR.
Okay.
I believe, I'm not, I'm not sure.
That's, that's something that could be incorporated with a very decent way.
Well, we can do it another time. So CPR takes all day to get everybody through it, but it's something great idea for the world.
Those courses are like an eight or ten-hour course, so I'm pretty just know.
The other thing, wanna look at the floor, if it's okay, uh, just an update on Brigham Academy. If anything has come to the select board, uh, for Brigham, as far as use of the building, uh, that kind of thing, and just wondering if we could just get an update on that.
We have had a.
Did you wish to answer that? Thank you. That's madam moderator.
Madam moderator there. We thought we had, uh, what position is that?
Franklin Patty?
Right, yes.
Janine House.
US District, University.
They, they originally showed an interest in that a couple of years ago, and, uh, I'll let you tell.
US Assistant Leadership Services was looking for an annex building back, I believe, two thousand and three. Uh, so we went and approached them again. They showed interest, but headquarters out of D.C. said no. Not getting funding.
Pretty much, is there an answer for funding?
Uh, so there's no interest in getting more on that. At the local level, I would say, yes, there's interest, but unless DC cuts those first strings, that's happening. The word we got back was, at the current time, they will not increase their physical footprint, so.
Thank you.
Yes, okay.
Patricia Sullivan, I believe you're talking about the academy building over here? I'm, I'm really sure that something should be, could and should be done with that building. It's a shame that the kids have to go even walk by that place. Really, it's spooky and scary, and it looks like it's gonna fall down.
Well, it's not.
And a point of personal privilege, as the moderator, I will say that there have been many, many committees that have worked on finding users for the building, and that I was on one of them, and it did not come to a good end. And, uh, so we keep struggling with the question and how to find an answer.
Well, thank you.
Sharon?
I have a concern about another old building in the town, and it's the one over here by the park with the, I'm not sure what's, what they call it, the Carrot House, um, that I, I, my concern is that it's gonna be torn down if it's not somehow renovated or stabilized or something, and I'm keen to see that happen, so.
Yes, sir?
The chairman of the cemetery commission and myself, a lot of conversation. We're gonna look at some stabilization in the building, and then if there's some grant money out there to do some work in that building. It is, it is only historic records thing.
So it's a very visible, we're talking about, we're talking about the, the first one, so I'm anxious about. Or the Robuster Cooper on it, not the first house, but the color of the chair, whatever, all of them, they're over there. But one that you can take down, as far as I'm concerned, but the other two, I would certainly like to see.
I, I don't think that we have control of those two roads of the town.
The conservation commission, I believe. But I'm just bringing it up, because I, I don't want the data come through tearing it down, but it says, what happened? You know, if we're gonna do something, we need to do it sooner rather than later.
Those are.
Yes, sir, Mr., uh, Mr. Alex.
Those are among the reasons that we thought a grant writer would help.
Okay, is there any other business that can be properly transacted at this time? Mr. Luntier?
Briefly, um, I'd like to give a shout-out to the town roam crew for the work they've done on the roads, given the limited resources they have. Um, I've lived on East Bakersfield Road for thirty-nine years, and it's never been in as good a condition as it's been for the last ten years. I think they've done a great job of that, particularly given the challenges of overloaded, excuse me, sap trucks running down the road at the most vulnerable time of the year, so I appreciate it.
Any other business that can be properly transacted, yes, Mr. Willie?
Robert Willie, uh, just wanna let everyone know, in case you, you may or may not have known, um, I am the fire warden for the town of Bakersfield. Uh, so coming up here in another couple of months, maybe, if the snow ever goes and the weather changes. Uh, we will be looking at a wildland fire season. Uh, we do keep, if everyone's noticed, uh, next to the fire department, there is a wildland fire danger sign that we try to keep updated on a daily basis. Um, as well as, if the danger gets high enough, or if I feel that the conditions are, are bad enough, there'll be actually a red sign that we put up that has a no burning. So the state doesn't normally do, except for a couple of years ago when it was extreme, extreme conditions, the state, the state doesn't really get involved with so-called statewide burning vans. They really leave that to local, uh, fire wardens to determine when you can or cannot burn, so. Be looking for those signs and those conditions as to when you wanna do your open burning. And, uh, as well, you do need a, a permit to be able to do open burning, so. Uh, there is, I believe, my form, and I have an online form to fill out for the, uh, fire, uh, burn permit, I believe is online. As long as it's working, I haven't checked it lately, but it's easier than trying to get ahold of me, cause I'm busy and work like everybody else, so. Um, when you send me that email, I get it, I review it, and then I can send you an email back whether or not it's good conditions to burn. Um, and as well, piggyback on Paul's comment, uh, with the fire department, we do have nine-one-one signs available. Uh, signage is getting better. However, there are lots and lots of places in Bakersfield where there is not good high-visibility signage. Uh, it really hinders our response times, so if you don't have high-visibility nine-one-one signs next to the road, uh, get with one of the fire department members, or stop by on Tuesday night, and we can get you one of those signs.
Catherine?
I just wanna say the link to what Robert said is on the town website.
Yeah, sorry, on the town website.
Yes.
Uh, I just had a question, um, Jim, I think you could still answer this, even though you're retired. I, how, I really use our recycling, um, center. And I'm wondering why we're moving to Ennisburg, because I'm not gonna drive to Ennisburg.
Well, because that site's not gonna be available for youths, because the state's gonna tear it up. They're gonna redo a bunch of drainage work in there, all that ongoing mess, so there is no site available in, in the town of Bakersfield.
Couldn't you put it about Heather McAdams, like you did before you moved to where it is now? It was right there at the beginning of the school.
That's not a good location, given the amount of recycling and reuse that we have now.
It's a temporary, I'm, I'm not talking about permanent.
Well, it's.
Cause we will reduce the amount of recycling.
There, there were issues at that site with trash and every, you know, we've had, we've not had a good site within the town of Bakersfield. That's ultimately what it comes to, so, um, that's something to watch going forward, what's gonna happen.
Mr. Steele?
How long are we talking to that projected amount of time that's gonna take?
A year.
One full calendar year.
That's what they say, but it's the state, so who knows what?
Also, there's a little recycling on Cambridge, it's also open on Wednesday.
The recycling in Cambridge is not technically available to residents. The recycling in Cambridge is not technically available to residents in Northwest Vermont Solid Waste Management District, because we're not, we don't pay taxes in there. The, the people in Bakersfield have, will have the one in Enesburgh, the one in Montgomery, the one at St. Albans, and you can go any day of the week to Georgia, Vermont, and the Georgia-Vermont site is, it's our building, it's where the headquarters are, it's very well-run, you can drop off a lot of materials that you can't drop off at this site during the warm weather months, you can drop off hazardous waste with an appointment, so that's available for that kind of use. Otherwise, that's just what's going to have to happen, unless somebody magically can come up with a site that can be used in Bakersfield.
Actually, this site was used a great deal, I think.
Oh, it's used tremendous amount, it saved people at Bakersfield a lot of money.
A lot of us just can't go to Enesburgh.
Yep.
Inside the road.
Yeah.
Shove it.
Sort of directed it, Jim, one of the alternatives was fast trash, is that not a viable...
That, that possibly could happen. We'll have to find a place for that, too. I mean, that potentially, we could do it at the Brigham, at the Brigham building, because that trash would have to be hauled out. I mean, what it would be, would be a truck there.
Right.
But the amount of trash that comes into that site at times, potentially would fill a truck up and then some, so that's something that I would direct your, any further questions and for information to your new representative.
A big truck.
Are there, are there any other comments? I hesitate to ask, discussion?
I think you know when to quit. I said, I think you know when to get done.
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion. Seeing some, I guess we'll wait.
Thank you. For the past few months, I've been working with Red Cross, the fire department, select board, we're updating the shelter agreement at the school. My next step is to go to the school board. After it is finalized, I will be looking for volunteers who would like to man a shelter that's open.
Staff?
Staff, that'll work.
Thank you.
The basic requirement is, you have to be willing to undergo and pass a background check, so if anybody has interest in that, please let me know.
Holbert.
Just to always say, there are some areas that the town did. The big one up on the, on the pole, we do have a new, we have a brand new radio.
Can I have a second? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you all.